Welcome everyone to the regular town council meeting town of Cave Creek, Arizona, Monday, November 1st, 2021. Marie, the role please.
Councilmember Roy A. Here. Councilmember Lars. Councilmember McGuire.
Present.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Deafen Duffer.
Here.
Councilmember Soffa.
Air.
Mayor Bunch.
Ah, here, all present accounted for. An executive session will be held with a held with purpose of discussion consultation when provided instructions to the town attorney and town manager regarding financing alternatives and impact on contract terms depending on financing alternatives in connection with the provision to fire protection services and two terms of agreement to enter into the Daisy Mountain pursuant to ARS section thirty-eight dash four thirty-one dot zero three. Dot A, three, and A four. Do we have a motion to move into session?
So move.
So all in favor.
Hi.
Oppose? And I welcome everyone to the regular town council meeting town of Cave Creek, Arizona, Monday, November 1st, 2021. Let's see here. Uh oh. Sorry about that. I didn't look that way. Supposed to. Anna, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Pledge to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Public announcements, and I've just drawn a blank. You may notice that we had, there were rumors that we weren't going to have anybody in the fire station down there this month, and they're actually still there until the first of December, from what I understand. And for those of you who tend to procrastinate, you can still drop off your ballots for the school. Over at the headquarters off of Sixtieth Street, there's a sign out there says headquarters. So you haven't, haven't voted yet. We will go to call to the public.
Anna Marcello. Council, this may seem a little selfish, but in lieu of the fact that one hundred and sixty-five of your citizens have signed a petition, so many of us are here now because we really didn't know when the agenda item was going to be given because we didn't get the agenda, I think, until Thursday, Marie, before it came out. So, so many of us are here now. Would it be possible, Mayor, to move us up a little closer? We're number seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. That's my request.
That all of them?
That is all.
That's it. Well, I was thinking about that. In the meantime, let's go to the consent agenda, which is number one recommend approval of remote tasting room liquor license application. Oh, okay. Well, how about this? All right. I'll put the book in front of me, so I'm looking down directly at it. Of course, it now I've got crossed eyes trying to see through the microphone. Consent agenda recommend approval of remote tasting room liquor license application for the meeting room LLC as requested by Agent Barbara Jean Christensen, DBA, the meeting room located sixty-sixty-one East Cave Creek Road, Cave Creek, Arizona. And item number two or item consent agenda number two is approval of the October eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one regular council meeting minutes. Counselor, we have a motion.
Second.
Although the favor signify by saying I.
I.
Opposed. Eyes currently have it. Oh, yeah, we've got a quarterly report from the utilities director. How long is that going to be? Ten or fifteen? Yeah, come, won't you step up here and do that? Because I, I went past that, and then we'll go look at the other. I'm sure y'all want to know how utilities are doing.
Mr. Mayor, while he's queuing up, can I just make a couple of announcements?
Oh, yeah, I forgot you too.
I just wanted to mention that Hidden in the Hills is coming up the weekend before Thanksgiving and the weekend after. And then we just want to make an announcement that the new recruits for the fire station that were hired by Daisy Mountain Fire will be graduating, and they will be holding the graduation ceremony over at the Holland Center. Friday, November nineteenth at four PM, and you are all welcome to attend.
Do we have a fire station number yet?
One forty-seven.
Didn't we get to choose?
You are. They insisted that you are Cape Creek Station One. You're going to be referred to as Cape Creek Station One, not one forty-seven. Cool.
Okay. Amy, Mayor and Council, let's start off with doing the quarterly report on the utilities department. Next slide, right? I'll be trying to be expeditious here for the audience. So I'm going to show you a bunch of slides here, which are sort of takeoffs in the charts that we've been showing for a while. And stop me if you want to learn more details, but I'm going to go through them fairly quickly. This is a summary of our CAP water deliveries to the different areas. Cave Creek, which includes our carefree direct customers, Desert Hills, and the raw water that we sent to Rancho Manganah. Two things takeaway from this is that we are on track to send about six hundred acre feet to Desert Hills this calendar year. So we, first time we did that was last year, and we've been creeping up. So we're, again, that's partly due to the really the reduction in groundwater resources out in Desert Hills. And the other thing to take away from this is that none of the, and they start, none of the carefree, the five hundred and forty accounts associated with the separation of system have been transferred yet. So we are still serving water to that. That's what you're seeing in this chart. The one thing, and you'll see in some other slides coming up, is as staff are really diving into the numbers in the water system, one thing is coming very apparent and something we need to really deal with is the meter at the cap canal itself. So the meter was replaced with a, was mechanical meter, propeller meter with a ultrasonic meter a few years ago, but we actually need to replace that with a magnet at what they call a mag meter. And that's a fairly large process. So we're actually working with something the CAP staff have asked us to do a number of years ago, and we actually, it comes back to our basic counting for everything comes back to that meter. So hopefully in the next month or so, I'll be coming back with you with a job order contract to start that project so we can get that done. So we get better overall accounting in the town's water system because it all starts at that meter.
Why didn't we put the right one in the first time?
I'm not sure. You know, I think the first time was done as a, for, excuse the records, was the propeller meter had failed, and the thought was we can put something simply in, is an insertion type of meter. It's a very expensive project. Right now, the order magnitude is about three hundred thousand dollars to do some tight improvements. You have to expose the piping to put the mag meter in the bypass. So it's not a cheap in undertaking, but I think it's something that's necessary for the system for overall accountability. And it's something the CAP has asked us to do. Another upgrade that we need to outside is an electrical upgrade on the main primary service entrance to the site. So we're trying to wrap that all together into one project. I'll bring that back to you. Next slide, right?
Shawn, would you get a little bit closer to the microphone?
Okay.
They were on me, so.
I'd like to ask a question on this first slide first. There've been numbers given in the past about utilization of water in desert hills over just seven hundred acre feet. This would, this annualizes at about five sixty. Is, is the trend downwards or is it just going up and down like a sine wave?
It does go up and down. Right now, we actually have one of our wells is out of service, and on tonight's agenda is the action to actually do that. So it does go up and down. This is trending about the same as we did last year where we transferred, I think, six hundred and forty acre feet. In total, Desert Hills is consuming just over eight hundred acre feet in total for all its meters. And then last year, we had to transfer into the system six hundred and forty acre feet. So we think we're going to be around six hundred at the end of this year.
Now, is this without the Galvin well operating?
Yeah, right now, again, this is going through the end of September. So right now, in all of October, we've been out with the Galvin well. So we've been.
Comes back online, that'll.
That'll help a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Next slide, Brian. So something we introduced a few meetings ago was an attempt to look at what we refer to as non-revenue water. That's sort of the difference between the water that we produce and account for and what we're actually billing. One unique thing is that we typically read our meters in the middle of the month. So it is hard for us to bring the two databases together, and that can actually have a difference, especially at the, the, the front and back ends of the summertime when there's actually a big demands either end. So this is the amount of water we're producing at the water treatment plant based on revenues, and it looks pretty good at this standpoint. But what's missing from this is this does not include process losses. So I want to make sure that council is aware of this. So this is not all of the cap water that gets sent in the system. This chart does not show the, the water produced by the wells. So that's like an error on our part when we produced this slide. I saw that when I was actually preparing for tonight's meeting, and I apologize for that. But it does go back to overall water accounting and making sure that we do have good metering, which goes back to that CAP meter that we, I think we need to get an upgrade project done as soon as we can to correct all our numbering as best as we can.
Does that non-revenue water include reclaimed water from the treatment plant? Where's that water?
This, this one does not. This is just tying to CAP water. It does not tie to the reclaimed water. There's actually more slides like we typically do, which we talked about to balance with Ranch Manganah and that system and our deliveries to that system.
Are you going to classify reclaimed water as revenue or not?
In this standpoint, this is, I think of this as more as a CAP deliveries, but the reclaimed water is a revenue source for us. It's actually another water resource for us. So it is something that we certainly don't add together into one chart. We could try to do something that would add it all together.
I just don't think it's revenue. We don't get enough off of that water to compare to what we get other places, and it's.
No, the loss in that system, and I'll get to that when I get to those slides. There is a large loss in that system for delivering water to the, to, to that. So that's something we need to try and fix structurally fix in the system. Next slide, Brian. Oh, this is a new addition. It wasn't in your package. This was the non-revenue. We're trying to break out just to Desert Hills itself. So the first one was overall to the two systems, and this was just trying to show the desert hills. Desert Hills is a little bit easier to meter just because we do have this reproduction wells when they're all up and operational, and we actually have two meters that are for the connection to Cave Creek. So it's a little bit easier system to, to manage, looking at the overall non-revenue. You can see the total there is about two point one six percent. So from a system wide desert hills is good, but in fact, when you look at overall, we actually should be shifting some of our, our lost water for cap water to Desert Hills simply because they are consuming two thirds of their waters coming from our system. But we're trying to look at different ways, and I don't want to overwhelm everybody with different numbers, but we are trying to calculate and look at it and be more efficient and effective with our water. Next slide. So this one, we're trying to look at just overall water losses, and I'm actually going to skip this one and go to the next one, which actually is something that we created after the fact that we saw the first one. What we didn't add are the treatment plant losses. So this one is a better representation because the first one was actually just the water that, that leaves the plant site, the water treatment plant site versus the water that we measure at the cap canal. And it was showing a gap in the system. So this new one was wanted to actually put on the process losses on the water treatment plant and things that we actually do want to work on. But in, in reality, we're seeing a total difference of about sixteen percent between, again, that main meter down at the cap canal and what we're, what we're currently metering at the plant. So it's showing that we got to get that under control. I think that is getting that meter replaced down at the cap canal will help us get this number. And so I don't trust these numbers simply because the one source is coming from that cap canal here, and we need to get that replaced as soon as we can. Next slide. Um, this is our tracking, and this is something that we've been showing you for quite a while. It's showing the leaks in the system, which are the bottom of the chart, the orange, and then our hydro flushing and other activities is the red. You can see, I'll point out two things. The large red band that you see in August, that was actually due to some zone nine water flushing that we had to do for compliance. Make sure that, because that's our, one of our zones that we actually have a fair number of customers in zone eight, but a lot of them actually aren't full-time residents. So we actually have to flush that system, make sure that water quality, water age stays good. And also in August, as we did a lot of work on the collection system. So we actually, that accounts for a lot of the water that was used for our contractor who was coming and helping us flushing out the collection system. So and the bottom of the chart, the orange line, the one thing I like to point out is the staff have been really, really proactive in going out and addressing leaks as soon as we can. So we don't have lingering issues. I credit the staff for doing that. And one tool, and I'll show you a slide later on, is we rented a backer trailer that allows them to be more efficient. So typically, when a leak occurs, we have to wait and have to wait for emergency blue stickers to arrive and do other things. So with our backer trailer, the staff are actually able to start the excavation sooner, get down to the leak and start the repair. So it's something that we started to rent, we started by renting this year. I'll be hopefully moving forward with a budget request to actually do a purchase. It is a not inexpensive piece of equipment, but I think it has proven itself to be useful, and part of that goes back to just our losses and also just our customer service, be able to get the stuff and respond more quickly. Next slide, Brian. So these are the flows coming out of our water ranch or wastewater treatment plant. A couple of trends I'll show again, this is, I should have done this for the water plant. We've done that before, and again, I was trying to be more consistent. We can see the blue is the twenty nineteen flows. Twenty twenty is the red line, dash line, and then twenty twenty-one are the solid orange lines. Two takeaways is that, you know, obviously COVID had a big impact on our waste water collection system. We saw that last year sort of stabilizing a little bit. And then you can see in July and August, that steep increase, that was actually due to the storms that we had. We had the two large storm events which caused sewer overflows, but we actually saw increases because of the leakage through the system inflow into the collection system. So the plant flows lingered higher than normal for a while after those two storm events as we leaked into it. So that's showing how critical it is for us to get on to repairing the collection system and stopping that inflow. In fact, it was water coming in the system, but we actually have to do, we do have to treat it. In this, this case, this is showing the actual back end of the plant. This is the water we produced and actually had to send through the entire treatment process, trough process. So it's not efficient to add stormwater to those numbers. Next slide, Brian. Talked about this a lot, and I thought the graphic would be good. We talked about the regiment on a golf course a lot. She is one of the town's largest water contracts. So I just figured walk you through because it took me a while to fully comprehend it. So the east lake on the right side of the screen is where we deliver the water to. So we actually have two delivery pipelines. We have the pipeline that comes up all the way from Forty-Fourth Street and Carefree Highway, which is our eight-inch effluent line. It discharges through the bank and just inside the bank, actually through the bottom of the, the, the lake lining is actually the backwash line. It's an eight-inch line that comes up. Rob is our backwash line from our water treatment plant. It also allows us to deliver raw cap water to the, to the lake system. So we have two ways of sending water up to this, the east lake. The east lake is fairly shallow. It overflows into the middle lake, which again is very shallow, more oriental. And then the west lake is the larger, and that's the one that's steeper, I believe, in total depth. It's over eighteen feet. And that's actually, the upper two lakes are controlled by we're. So the, the west lake is the one that fluctuates. When you hear people saying the wake levels are low, it's because the west lake is down. And it's the largest of the three, and it was put in for the reservoir storage. But you can see at the bottom of the slide is there's a, the golf course irrigation booster. So currently, we deliver water to the system. It cascades from the east to the middle to the west lake. Golf course draws it off. It's at their meter that we meter it. And I've shown there in the red line, you can see the overflow to the wash. So it's been over two years, actually closer to three, that the town's actually put an overflow meter on that. We actually have some good data as far as what's coming out of the system. So I just figured graphically it's good. So everybody can see what we're looking at when I show you numbers of what's going on with the Ranch Manganah Lake system. Next slide, right? And here's the, the stack chart by, by type. So we have the, the rock cap water is sort of the, the light blue at the top of the slide, slide. So we don't typically have to send raw cap water up there. It's only during the summer times when we help them meet their summer demands. Otherwise, we're actually sending them treated effluent, which is the bottom of the chart, the orange, and then the red line is the water that we send from the process, the water treatment plant process water or captive water from the palm membranes. So I just wanted to point out in September, you'll see a little bit of blue on the top there that actually happens to correspond with their overseeding operations. The last week of September, and they started their operations in September, and then by last week of October or September, when they start to really have no water, that grass seed, they ask us to deliver a lot more water. So it's, it's interesting when you see the dynamics, that system up there because our wastewater flows start to pick up. And then for a short period of time, they don't consume any water because they're starting to just serve their grass, get ready for overseas, and then all of a sudden they need more water from us. So it's, it's, it's a hard system to balance in some regards, and that's why you see the, the cap water delivery skips August. There's also a point in August, July and August, when they had the winter storms that that affected their, the water that they needed up there. Next slide, Brian. And this was trying to show some of the losses in that system. So might not be, and I'm looking at now, it always looks better when I'm doing it on my, our, our computers. But you can see the amount of water delivered to the, the ponds, which again are the two discharge points we have in that one, the referred to as the east lake, and then the water that they consume. So the year to date, the total non-revenue for that system is ninety-four acre feet of water. So typically, we've been delivering over five hundred acre feet, and they can consuming three hundred and three hundred to four, three hundred and forty acre feet. So it's, there are efficiencies. What we're trying to actually get down to. Next slide is where are those inefficiencies in the system? Pond evaporation is something that gets talked about a lot. We actually do have, we work with Miracle Pop County Flood Control. They actually have what they call a, a pond of, of evaporation station that we can actually gather and gain some data from that's nearby. There's one at Lake Pleasant. There's actually one in Carefree that we can, can utilize the results from. Since we've been monitoring the overflow, that it gives us another data point to look at, and you can see the pond overflow here is the orange, and you can see that graph there again, obviously during the summertime, August or April, May, June, July, weather's hot, and it's mostly evaporation. And then we get into an overflow. What was unique in this case is because of the monsoon storms in the end of July and through August, they didn't need that much irrigation water. So typically, we wouldn't see the overflowing start until September and October, but we, we did see that this year, and that was because of the, the storms. And then again, in September, they started doing their overseeding operation. So as our wastewater flows start to pick up, and we're sending them all that effluent right now, because we don't have any other place to put that effluent, it has to overflow the pond system. So that's one thing that we're hopefully going to try and correct with the capital program and with our master planning moving forward, that the town needs to figure out a more beneficial use for that, that water. The time it. Next slide, Brian. On a regular core standpoint, something we wanted to point out was our backflow prevention program. So right now, we, we regulate just under seven hundred backflow devices, and these are devices that help protect the water system. At this point, we have about a third of them have been given their first notice for non-compliance. They're, they're typically, or they are actually on a testing schedule. They ask for every year to have a testing report done. We use an outside vendor called BSI to manage that program for us. So right now, about a third of the accounts have been received their first notice that they need to get that test information into us. So it's something that we're concerned about. But we think we can work through the process and make sure they're aware of what's going on. The, the biggest stick that we can have is if you're out of compliance, and because potential for cross connection in the system, we could shut off a water account. We do not want to go to that effort. But we do want to highlight to the fact that people need to maintain their backflow devices. If you get the letter from us, it's, it's not just because we're trying to get money, or we're trying to do something like that. We're trying to perfect the water system. So it is important. So.
Shawn, are there a lot of resident, residents that are under the backflow program?
Yeah, quite a few because we require anybody who has a, their own personal well because potential for that well water, you have a proper action, or if they have agricultural or livestock, morally got livestock on there that they, that's one of the criteria that we use.
You consider horses livestock?
Yes. Yeah. I was trying to look at the wording there, sorry. Next slide. We talked about our grease trap program because we've talked a lot about our collection system of late, and honestly, we had with the storms this year, really pushed the issue of making repairs. But as part of that, it's also just keeping things like grease and other things that align that can actually be detrimental, both can cause deterioration and cause clogging in the system. So I'm glad to report that again, our program, we had a couple of of the companies that actually we had to send notices to, but they corrected it very, very quickly and got, got back into compliance. One thing we are working on is we actually have a consultant, and as part of the consulting team, they had someone who actually worked in pre-treatment wastewater pre-treatment for about thirty years in Tempe, and they're looking at our overall program and trying to give us recommendations and how to be more efficient with it. One thing, if you look at code, it's actually not just a grease trap program. We sometimes refer to as fog, fats, oils, and grease, but it's actually, it's called pre-treatment, and that's anything that can get into the sewer system that could be detrimental. So it also includes things like, and by code, sand and oil interceptors. We actually have two commercial properties south of Carefree Highway. They go tires and Sun Devil Auto, which currently actually have oil interceptors. So we need to add them into the program and need to add the testing criteria. Typically, from what my research is, you, you put them on, those are on a more of a six-month or an annual process that they go and get them checked out. But that's what we're trying to look at. We're bringing the consultant in to be more efficient and make sure we capture everything that we should be testing. Next. I'm glad to report on the water resources side. We've got a lot of activity happening, and we actually, a lot of it's good. So the town has not been utilizing its full CAP allocation for a number of years. Still looking forward. We don't think we will be using either our municipal industrial M and I water or the new non-Indian agricultural water that we've just contracted with. So we've been, we've been working with the CAP. Or actually working with Arizona Department of Water Resources to actually get recharge permits put in place to allow us to send our water, unused water to, there's four CAP facilities and three per the IGA that we have in place with the city Phoenix that we can use. So as of this slide, actually, we had two permits for two of the CAP facilities. We actually just received the other two today. So we have all four of the permits in place for the CAP, which is allows us to work with them and actually have some of our unused allocation sent and put in and made into long-term storage credits for the town. Next slide, Brian. In the last quarter, we've actually had a really good meeting with Arizona Department of Water Resources staff talking about certificates of assured water supply. So what you're seeing on the, the side of the screen is actually a demonstration of the, the graphical GIS system that we've created of mapping. The ADWR staff were very thankful to see that. We've actually got copies of all the certificates. There was a hundred and six, a hundred and seven, some of which have been canceled, but we've actually tried to map them all out so they can map them and stack them all together. Again, they go back to specific land properties, but as the boundaries change, it's hard to keep track of it. And they even admitted, so they like the work that we've done. We're doing some final quality control on the data set, and then we'll be shipping that off to them in a raw GIS format because their staff actually can, can utilize that, and we'll continue the conversation. I think it looks good. It will, we'll get a better overall accounting, and it looks like we're actually going to get a little bit of water back from what the, the state was accounting as far as our certificates that were outstanding. And it also helps with discussions with Carefree and the separation of the system because, so I was talking with Greg Grossman in Carefree Water Company. When we transfer these over, we can't transfer those certificates because they're actually held by the landowner, but we can have that discussion with the Arizona Department of Water Resources, make sure that they're not part of our accounting pools, especially once the allocation gets transferred over to Carefree. So we, we don't want to be double counted. So another project we have ongoing is an evaluation of the town's wells. So we have a consultant who's looking at that. We have actually thirteen wells in the ADWR registry that are, are in our name, and physically I can find all but four. Just a couple of them were abandoned with some projects that happened. So we're actually just going through, and as part of that, we'll do some evaluations on the physical of casings themselves. I'll keep going through this quickly. So next slide, Brian. I'll do an update on CAP. Next slide. We're here. So just a quick update on the City of Phoenix interconnect project. We actually have been meeting with Black and Beach. We're wrapping up the basics of design of that site. It will be a dual zone booster. So it will, will boost into, refer to as zone one, which is along Carefree Highway all the way out to our connection with Carefree, or to, sorry, Desert Hills. That's our pressures on one, and then also pressure zone four, so directly feed into the sixteen-inch line going north, and zone four basically goes all the way up to the near booster station. So we've, we've looked at the parameters of that, and we've actually, one of the bigger things is water quality. We're, we are at the top end of the city Phoenix system, and there is concern about water age and TTHM issues. So the site is going to be designed with a aeration system in the reservoir. So the water will go in, and then we can strip off any TTHMs to make sure we get in compliance. We're not adding to it. We do feel good that once we actually do the connection to Phoenix, we'll actually be helping them out because they will be taking, you'll be taking water from the top end of their system and helping them out. So it'll help water age throughout the system, but it's something we're very cautious of, and it came up during the evaluation report that we did on that project. Now, the project is the collection system assessment. So GHDs, the consultants, have been working on that with us. They've actually gone out and surveyed demand holes. That was an exercise done to make sure that we have the best water model that we can or our model of the wastewater system. They're wrapping that information together, and they're putting that together with some of the inspections that we did, I mentioned in August, that we worked with contractor Ames and clean and inspect. So after the storm events, we went in to try and find out what was going on. I'll be happy to report that we didn't see any significant line breaks that allowed the water in. I think we're sort of dying, death of a thousand pins. We got a lot of leaks in the, in the manholes. And so we've got contracts in place to count, councils allowed us to do both repairs of the main lines and of our manholes, and we'll work with those contractors to identify scopes and get them going. Next project. I've talked about the Carefree disconnect. So part of settlement agreement was a payment. That payment has been received this last quarter. The transfer of the water resources that application has been made. So that will be transferred at three hundred and seventy-eight acre feet from our CAP municipal industrial allocation to Carefree. That is, is working its way through process. Carefree is in charge of the project, so they're doing everything physically. Nothing has been disconnected from the system. We have worked with Carefree to pick one spot where they actually physically have changed out fourteen meters, and the test was there because we're going to change out five hundred and forty, that if we can figure out how to best combine our, our data readings, and that may make it more. pick one spot where they actually physically have changed out 14 meters and the test was there because we're going to change out 540 that if we can figure out how to best combine our, our data readings and that may make it more smoothly for, for both sides of the system at the backend of it. So. They have them in, it's a, an area called tranquil place, which is in Carefree. And, and it's been working well, uh, to get the information. We haven't been able to do it electronically. So we're physically getting a spreadsheet from them and having to input into ours. But we're working on that to make it more smoothly in, in the future. Next slide, Brian. At the, our water ranch, our wastewater treatment plant, uh, one thing I wanted to bring to council attention, uh, tension is we actually have two, uh, pieces of equipment. It's out of service that we're trying to work on getting the repairs done. The headworks of the plant is where we treat is the first, uh, spot where you treat effectively. You're removing material that can't be, get, uh, handled in the process as it goes through. So, um, grit is sands, uh, coffee grinds and things like that. They can't be disposed of. Or broken down in the, in the treatment process. You want to remove that and you also want to remove things like rags. And I'll point out that we are still having a ragging issue in the system. So that is wet wipes. They are not disposable. Please do not flush them down a toilet. Clorox wipes are another thing that we're seeing. We're seeing towels in our lift stations. It's surprising. Some of the stuff that we're seeing in there and it's, it's causing a lot of operational issues and headaches for our staff who physically have to remove that from our system. The, there is an influence screen at the treatment plant. Uh, there's been a number of operational issues with that. So currently you can see it's been removed from the channel because we were trying to do evaluation and it requires extensive repairs. We're thinking it's best to replace it. So we had an evaluation done. Be hoping to bring a contract back here shortly so that we can actually do the replacement on that. The, the staff and myself believe that the influence screen is, is most important to get up and running. We can work around the grit unit of, we want to get that long-term put back in. But we gotta get the influence screen back in so we don't put material into the basins. Next slide, Ryan. Next slide. I'm happily report one operational project. We've had a license test on is the Ranch Minion list station. Um, we've been working this past year. Actually, uh, we started back in April, May with the pump vendor, uh, provided the original pumps for that site about the capacity of site, but obviously the storms that happened in July and August really pushed the issue with us. Uh, council had already authorized the purchase of new pumps at the site and I'm happy to show that actually we've made some good progress. So there were two physical overflows on tonight's agenda is actually. Um, helping pay for some of the extra equipment that we had at the site to prevent a third overflow and trying to minimize the two overflows that occurred. So the chart you're seeing here is actually a pressure logger. So the one on the left is actually showing, um, the response of what, when we first put in the first new pump, uh, as we told council, we'd put one pump in, test it and verify before about the second pump. Cause these are. Uh, about $32,000 a piece. You can see the, the smoother flow that has a higher pressure. That is the new higher pressure pump and the, the, the more jagged is actually our older pump. As you can see, it was trying to push into the force main and not being effective. So the chart on the bottom right is actually showing with it both new pumps installed. You can see much smoother pump curve there. Um, the status that is very fine. Actually it's taken every two seconds. So that's why it jumps around. It looks like it's jumping around a lot, but actually if we, we, we can smooth it out a little bit more, but it's really showing that. You're seeing the more typical operation now that we've got new pumps in that site is operating a lot more efficiently and effectively. Next slide. And one of the things, and again, that's, uh, that's the cleanest you'll ever see. One of our wastewater pumps there hanging on the crane. Um, we've almost doubled the capacity of the site with the new pumps that council authorized us. So I'm happy to report that we've been doing tests and you see at the bottom and it's the chart of our testing dating back till, uh, May of 19 that we've been testing that site out. We don't have a flow meter. So we can do drawdown tests. We've come, come very efficient of doing that. Uh, we can show that again, typically before we could get the most we've ever saw was just around 300 gallons minute with both pumps running with some pipe modifications in the new pumps. We're almost at 590 gallons a minute. It's almost double the flow. So the, the storm events that we have seen, uh, uh, we think that if the, the pumps are overwhelmed by about a hundred, 150 gallons a minute of flow. So now we have the pumping ability. We could have actually, uh, captured those flows and kept the system from overflowing. So. Um, two other projects we're going to be doing is where you knew internal drop connection inside the wet well. That's hopefully going to help, um, minimize some of the odors that we get when the chipperosa force main discharges into the, uh, ranch behind us like. And then we're looking for a new chemical injection system, which will be upstream of Rancho Minyana. So we worked with a vendor to actually look, do an odor study in the collection system. And we found that the area south, uh, going south of Oregonos down to stage coach, um, is actually had higher, uh, odor, odor issues than everywhere else in the system. So they are proposing a new chemical injection system. Um, the bioxen system is still operational. They're looking to do a temporary test, do a new, uh, chemical injection station at the stage coach site, which you then discharge into Ranch Minyana. Um, so that's, we're going to test that and see if it does work and maybe switch that chemical technology. Uh, the last slide is just distribution projects. And sorry if it takes so much time today, but I just wanted to highlight again, uh, the work of all the staff. I, I got to credit to all the staff, but I just wanted to show the distribution staff. They've been working very hard and very proactively. Again, continuing the, the operations, like when we see a service line break, uh, we don't just put a rap on it and call it a day. We, we go out there and actually we might do that temporarily overnight or for a few days, but we, we are trying to replace this and make it a better system. And you can see in the bottom right, that is the, the trailer unit that we pull behind our service body truck. So that's a, a small vector truck in effect and allows the guys to get in and actually start doing excavations in advance and search some minimized leaks. And helps us be more efficient. So, uh, we'll look to see if we can purchase one of those, uh, they're not cheap, but it's, I think it's an essential tool for an operation like ours. With that, uh, I conclude and our can answer any questions.
Councilor Morris, I knew you had questions. I saw you with your pencil over there.
Well, it's more, more comments. This is the, by far the best report we've ever had. And, uh, it really. Shows where the opportunities are to improve the system. And secondly, it's an incredible amount of work on literally everything in our system. Is under re-engineering or improvement for maintenance and the rest of it. So I just. Want to credit you Sean personally and staff for.
Staff, sir.
For dealing with a system that is decrepit and is on the way to recovery. Thank you.
Councilmember.
Um, my comment is I'm, I'm thrilled. Um, my campaign in 2018 was all about storing CAP water underground and we finally accomplished getting our permits. It's thrilling. It's thrilling to be able to, uh, uh, capitalize on our, on storing our extra water from CAP and not letting it go down the canal and, and wasting that extra water. We finally have our permits. We're finally going to be able to save that CAP water. It's essential, uh, to, to the future of our, our, our water resources. So thank you. Finally, four years later.
Questions? All right. Thank you, Sean. Well, now that everybody sat through that, we'll go ahead and I think we'll go ahead and move on to, uh, agenda item number seven. Which is, uh, council discussion approval of Hidden Canyon request for an exception to the subdivision ordinance requirements as they apply to this development. Reference case P dash 21 dot zero or dash zero one, Hidden Canyon preliminary plat specifically section 2.6 dash E dot one. Which states all lots or parcels should front onto and take access from a dedicated and accepted public street classified. As and developed to local collector or arterial street standards. The public street shall connect to the publicly dedicated and accepted street system, case E dash 21 dash zero one. Mr. Councilman?
Mr. Mayor, before we proceed. Before we proceed.
What?
Can we, can we speak?
Oh, sure.
Uh, for those of you in the audience, uh, you might not be aware, uh, but there was an incident, uh, that occurred. That has required, uh, me to recuse my.
Oh.
My vote. It, it had to do with, uh, planning commissioner who wrote an email to me and to another council member. Uh, prior to the discussion at the planning commission. Um, and it compromised my vote. And. Per the advice of council. I have to recuse my vote. It's very unfortunate, uh, because I, uh, take my, um, participation on this council very seriously. And, um, but it's the only option, um, that there is. Um, so I have to recuse myself from voting on this issue. And, uh, that's all I have to say at this time.
Sorry for forgetting that. Councilman Morris.
Um, I was the other council person that, uh, received the communication and on advice of council. And because it's in the best interest of the town too, I'm going to recuse myself. I'm going to stay here and listen, but I'm not going to participate.
That's all. Mr. Councilman.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, members of council. These are essentially, uh, six applications before you this evening, um, for consideration by the town council. And they pertain to one project totaling approximately six, 76 acres west of town hall. I just want to be clear that none of the applications before the town council this evening seek to amend the general plan, land use map or text in the general plan as adopted in 2021. Uh, the applications also do not seek to rezone the property or amend text within the zoning ordinance or subdivision ordinance. Uh, the exception requests are not variances. Um, a, a variance is to the zoning ordinance. Where under no circumstances could a home be built or, or other use enjoyed by similar situated property. Uh, that's, that's what a variance is for, and those are mandated by four, uh, criteria dictated by the state. The 2021 general plan identifies this area with a medium density residential designation. Which states that the category of land use is to provide a transitional residential density between rural residential uses and uses common to the town core. The medium density land use allows for 1.24 to 2.42 dwelling units per acre. The existing zoning of the property is approximately half or 38 acres, uh, R35 and a half, 38 acres of our 18. It's also important to note that, uh, there have been previously approved subdivision plans and entitlements, including exceptions. That were granted for this property circa 2006, 2007, and that totaled 63 residential lots, uh, public roads with 80 foot dedicated rights of way. As well as no dedicated open space. Uh, these applications, including the five exception requests are a culmination of work between the applicant and their engineers as well as town staff. Over years of discussion and review, which result in 48 custom residential lots. Further through the implementation of proposed subdivision exception requests, and I'll just speak kind of broadly over what all of those entail. And then for each case, I can go into a little bit more detail. Um, but essentially what the exception requests amount to, put simply is an attempt to minimize grading and disturbance, uh, for the overall subdivision improvements. The exception requests include proposing private streets, extended cul-de-sac streets, greater block width, as well as eight total flag lots. The private streets will be within a public easement. Therefore will not be gated and they will provide access to public utilities for service, uh, and maintenance. As well as 27 acres of dedicated open space with public non-motorized trails dedicated within the subdivision. From town hall and the new pathway from the town core, then connecting to the Surrey road trail, which accesses the Go John trail and Cave Creek Regional Park. Um, the Go John trail is through the, uh, desert foothills land trust land, which is contiguous to this property to the west. So as I stated, there will be no gates at either entrance to the subdivision. And that's outlined in the staff reports and expressed as well in the recommendation, recommended conditions of approval. So just briefly a subdivision ordinance, the subdivision ordinance allows for consideration of exceptions to the subdivision ordinance pursuant to section 1.2C, where in cases of extraordinary conditions of topography, land ownership, adjacent development, or other circumstances not provided for. In the regulations, each request for an exception can be made by an applicant. So really what that boils down to is, um, if you have attractive land that you wish to subdivide. Uh, pursuant to the subdivision ordinance, you look at all of the features of the property. And, um, what the exception requests allow you to do is, is try to determine the best means of development for the property. So that's really a case by case and specific to each subdivision that comes through. Uh, one thing I've heard is that, um, a lot of times, uh, any council action, uh, is the public feels sets a precedent. Uh, exceptions are, are quite the contrary to that. It's really looking at this specific piece of property and whether or not the exceptions that are requested, uh, and, and proposed, uh, should be approved or not. What may work on this development may not be appropriate to ask for an exception on another, uh, piece of property or tract of land. But property owners are afforded through the principles of due process, the opportunity to submit these requests, uh, pursuant to the subdivision ordinance. Many of these exception requests primarily deal with the regulations under the purview of the town engineer and fire safety official. Both town officials have been working with the project engineer to ensure roadway design that maintains proper ingress and egress, not only for the residences that may, uh, someday be built there, but also for emergency apparatus. And those, uh, streets will be improved standards, uh, or including improved standards for private driveway access. In order to minimize the extent of grading proposed. Uh, both town officials have included their input and drafting conditions of approval for the cases related to the preliminary plaque case. That's, uh, the last item after the exception request. The town's utilities director has also worked with the project engineer to plan for and design upgraded water and wastewater improvements necessary. To serve the residential development and allow unrestricted access to service and maintenance of the systems. The trails coordinator, as well as myself, have worked with the project engineer to identify and the developer will install to town standards and important non-motorized trail connection, as I previously mentioned. So although, uh, I presented in broad terms, all five exception cases and the preliminary plaque case just now, uh, the town council per the subdivision ordinance. Uh, must consider each by a separate vote. All the associated recommend, recommended conditions of approval are attached to the preliminary plat found in exhibit B, which can be found on pages 206 and 210 of your packet. As far as exception requests, the first one, uh, E2101, the planning commission voted five in favor and one opposed. To recommend approval of E2101 to allow parcels within the subdivision to take access from an undedicated right of way. The recommendation can be found in exhibit C, page 211 of the agenda packet. So with this first exception request and, and similar to the fifth exception request, uh, all has to deal with whether or not. Uh, the town wishes the, the subdivider to provide, uh, public rights of way dedicated streets, uh, to town standards and right of way width. And with that, I'll answer any questions council may have.
May.
Councilman Silva.
Mr. Councilman. Uh, as the town planner and the land planner. Would you be kind enough to address? What would be the? Design and look of the plan? If the applicant were not to ask for any exceptions. And build it pursuant to. The current rules and regulations that we have today. More specifically. The number of lots that could be built. Uh, open space requirements, if any. Uh, differing from the 27 acre. Uh, that we're looking at now, uh, street widths, trail requirements, the public streets, the width of the right of way. Uh, and, and could the plan? Be developed within, I think it would be a required 80 foot right of way. And to what, to what effect would that change? If any, the current basic land plan?
Sure, uh. Mayor Bunch, Commissioner Silva, members of the commission. I think history is a good teacher and, um, I think look, going back through, uh, the boxes still in my office since this was submitted. Looking at the previously approved and considered preliminary plats and final plats for this subdivision. The zoning and, and those requirements haven't changed in 20 plus years. Uh, in fact, the zoning was entitled when the town incorporated in 1986 at, at R118 and R135. So. What? The town has considered and approved in the past is 63 lots, meeting all the requirements. Uh, I believe they got an exception request for the cul-de-sac length, which is another, uh, exception this evening. As far as the right of way width. Um, 80 feet, I believe is the standard, um, upwards of 40 earth, I'm sorry. 34 to 36. Feet, uh, paved surface.
32 to 32.
Um. And, uh, trails, yes, the, the town would still, uh, because Bambi would, would not let that go. Uh, Bambi would still require that they provide trails through the, uh, subdivision. That is one thing in the subdivision ordinance that, that staff is required to look at, um, and attempt. Would they need to dedicate 27 acres of open space? Uh, likely if they were going to do a different, uh, design, meeting all of the requirements of the subdivision ordinance. Um, not asking for the exceptions they're asking for. They could do 63 lots and chances are. Not offer any publicly dedicated open spaces as a result, because they would need that lot area. For, for each parcel.
Based on the topography of the site, which is quite severe in many areas. If, uh, the applicant were to have considered not asking for exceptions. The applicant were to have considered not asking for exceptions. How much would that cut into our hillside ordinance? And do you think they'd be able to build an effective plan with more or less lots than they're currently asking for? Or have before us today?
That, once again, history is a good teacher and. They have shown the ability, the the property owners in the past have shown the ability to construct sixty three lots and provide access. For town standards, yes.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Councilman. At this point, did we want to hear from the applicant at all or at this stage of the game or? Before we go, Mr. Sims, I have a question. We had this listed here as as public hearing. Is it truly public hearing since it was it was through the, it's already been through the planning commission, at which point they had the public hearing? Most municipalities do not even do not even include a preliminary plat in a council.
You do, and this says this says you as council have to approve, so that's why we have to have a hearing.
But but not public comment, but the a hearing versus public comment was the question.
Well, I think I thought it was here. Let's see what you said.
It says hearing.
Well, then you're then you're going to have a hearing.
Okay, all right. I I just wanted a clarification on that because it's curious to me that that so many municipalities do not. Even go to the extent that we go to in a town of Cave Creek.
Not, I think that's because of your code, you're, I think your code.
Okay, yeah, we're special. You guys, you guys get a lot more, a lot more latitude on this than than a lot, most of the communities in the in the state of Arizona. So at this point, I will open public hearing on this one, and before you call anybody, did you want, I think I was supposed to read these that I've got here. I gotta find them first. Good grief. I might have to open my water before I get too far into this. All right, let's see here. Agenda item number seven, would like, this is a pose, Hidden Canyon Development, like comments to be read aloud. Please no more exceptions to the general plan. Please keep Cave Creek the humble little town that it is. Say no to increased traffic and destruction of this desert paradise. And that is from. Wow, Nancy Thomasunis, I probably probably butchered the name. Next one is from James Hemis, which would like comments read aloud and. Where are they? Oh, he opposes. I don't see any comments to read there. Next one's Charles and Terry Webb. It's Cave Creek Gressens. We're opposed. Are we one of the signers in the petition of opposition of and opposed the requested exceptions to the subdivision development? As they apply at Hidden Canyon respectfully, Terry and Chuck Webb. The next one is Brian Creek, spokesman for a group of silent majority, would like comments to be read aloud, although. I don't see the comments here. Next one is Sarah Foster. Would like comments to be read aloud. These flag lots need to be done away with. Purchaser of the property knew what they were buying. They wanted to cram houses in. Then they shouldn't have bought a steep hill. Next one is Lisa Di Adamo, would like comments to be read aloud, pose, and there are no other comments beyond that. Don't see anything there, I'm missing. All right, um, okay, that was number, that's all the ones I I actually moved on to agenda item number eight. So we'll just stop right there since we're on on seven at this point in time. And I believe we want. Anna Marzolo to come up. Now, as as we start. We do limit comments to three minutes, however. Ms. Marzolo is going to make an appeal. Where's where's she at? Oh, she's digging through her papers. Yeah, please.
Remember the days when I didn't need these and I didn't need a written script?
It's tough getting getting on, isn't it?
The first thing I wanted to do, oh, Anna Marzolo, five nine two nine East Surrey Drive, Cape Creek, citizen. The first thing I want. First thing I wanted, is that better? First thing I wanted to do and needed to do, we turned in a hundred and fifty five signatures, which are in your packet. And in the last few days, I received another ten, and they all asked that I I give you their names. And I'd like to do that. Martha Arnold, she lives on Fleming Springs, mouth has been a long time creeker. And she wants me to read this. I would like to add my name and signature to the citizens protest list being circulated to encourage the Cave Creek Town Council. To reject the current development plan for Hidden Canyon Estates, return it to the Cave Creek Planning and Zoning Commission. And reformatted plan consistent with zoning. Contour limitations and affirm assurance that this will not be a gated community removed from the town surface road system. Those were the only comments. Kathy Sloan lives on Odom. Charles and Nina Spitzer on Kinda Mountain Drive. Jim and Darlene Southern on North Fifty Sixth Street. Connie Troglio on East Desert Winds. And Mark and Marie Muller on Surrey Drive. I was really careful that every signature is a Cave Creek citizen, Cave Creek resident within the town boundaries. Now in your packet, all of you received the four pages of our arguments. We addressed every case. And why we felt the opposition was warranted. I I'm going to expect and respect that you all did take an opportunity to read it. And so therefore, what I will be speaking on each case will be kind of a Reader's Digest version. There are several people here who want to speak with you, so I'm going to try to stay to my three minutes, mayor, as well as I could. And I want to thank you again for for being open, as was the the P and Z Commission Chairman. To allow me the extra time because of so many people who are counting on this. And Luke and Marie, this will go for you. And I'm going to stick to my script. As Italian, I have a tendency to roam off. You guys will be here till two AM in the morning, so I'm going to stick to my strip. We one hundred and sixty five of your citizens stand in opposition to this applicant's exception request. This case is proposed exception that runs contrary to our general plan and subdivision ordinance recently approved by your citizen. The subdivision of land is the first step in community building. Therefore, land subdivision must be in harmony with public objections. Our subdivision ordinance provides, and I quote. The standards and restrictions established by this ordinance shall be held as the minimum requirements. For the promotion of our general plan. Five exceptions, eight of them flag lots, can hardly qualify as minimum. The town considers subdivision design to be an integral part in the implementation of the goal and objectives. As adopted in the town's general plan. In fact, land subdivision is the primary tool for transforming of our town's general plan into reality. Access to a dedicated and accepted public street is crucial as stated in the ordinance. All lots parcel shall front on two and take access from a dedicated and accepted public street. A public street means any road for public travel under the jurisdiction of a public authority. And maintained by that public authority. This exception case number E twenty one oh one must be denied. I'll speak on each of the cases individually.
Dusty Rhodes.
Mayor, council. Finding commission, I guess, and Luke, appreciate the opportunity to speak. My name is Dusty Rhodes. I live in four one four oh three North Old State Road. As I recall, we had a big brouhaha over the planning. Whether we should pass a general plan or not, and I think we voted on it in August to accept it. Here we are three months later. I think it's pretty bad public policy. I'm neither in favor or opposed to the development, but I think it's pretty poor public policy on your part. If you make exceptions this quickly to the rule. I mean, what it tells me is that we aren't serious about the general plan. Why have one if you're not going to follow it? And I'm not trying to be rude, and I'm not trying to, and like I said, I have nothing against developer. I don't care if it gets developed or not. I live way out there, so I don't care. But I think you guys ought to think seriously about what you want to do and what you want Cave Creek to look like. Do you want it to be Scottsdale? Do you want it to be Cave Creek? Do you want it to be North Phoenix? They're all different. Some of them not so pleasant. Cave Creek is pretty pleasant. That's all I got to say, thank you.
Roxanne Betcher.
Just shout through the door.
Roxanne B O A T T C H E R. And Mark. They don't want to speak. Heike, H E I K E, Tam Pushek. I'm sorry, I may not have pronounced that correctly.
My name is Heike. When I moved here three or four years ago from Scottsdale to get away from construction everywhere. And big buildings, not just the rural, my family home mansions. They could be built somewhere else, maybe sooner or or later on the moon. So I oppose strongly to any construction that takes away the rural. Atmosphere of Cape Creek. And what I hear here tonight is again typical. Like Mister. Oh, just mentioned that he doesn't disagree to a building. In general, to find out what we could build. But a few moments later, it's already decided that we continue building mansions and big homes. With big, big roofs and everything. I see them all over Cape Creek on Cape Creek Highway going west. These big mansions that are being built and. Sooner or later, they all will have no more water and we suffer and I strongly oppose. And you you can't just right away say this is what we are going to be building. And then the little man like me is has no more voices. And it's wrong. It's absolutely wrong. And I can only say maybe we should vote you all out of office. Thank you.
Michael M I C O L I E Z Y K.
Hi, I'm Mick, Mick Lychek. I live right up here on Pasail Dulce. I just want to say, coming out to Cave Creek was nice. I was getting out of town, getting out in the country, getting out where it was open. It was beautiful. Been out here twelve years, watching. Oh, sorry, movie and seeing what's happening south of us, where we see these subdivisions and whatnot going in, and it's just a mess down there. We really don't need that up here. Home values up here, our properties, the desert, we just need to keep it the way it is, not bring these things in. Thank you.
Maureen Cruz. Theodore Loomis.
Mr. Sims, while we're at a break, would you explain to us how passing the general plan affected existing zoning on parcels in the community?
Raise your question. This isn't zoning, this is subdivision, right? The state statute says that. The state statute says that zoning must be consistent with the general plan. The statute is silent as to the relationship between subdivision ordinance and.
Could any of the goals and. In the general plan and the and the general plan affect existing zoning, this is a seventy. Yeah, seventy six acres with underlying zoning in existence since before we were even a town.
No, but but this isn't a zoning matter. Yes, you're you're right. You cannot affect existing zoning. It's already vested.
Yeah, so this is this is a subdivision. It's subdivision, right, and and the general plan cannot supersede. No, the existing zoning when it was passed.
I agree with you, but but you're not handling a zoning question tonight. You're just doing subdivision, right? And you don't have the requirement that the subdivision, sorry. That the zoning must be consistent with the general plan. It is silent as to the subdivision ordinance.
Okay, Maureen Cruz is. Okay.
Thank you.
Megan Somerville Loomis, I guess, does not want to speak. Linda Redwood Martinez. He is opposed, but that's okay.
But there you have it. So, and I live at four one five one five North Canyon Springs Drive. I have a question. I just want clarification. Is one of these exceptions now going to be permitting building the properties going up a hill? Which would not have happened without the exception, or will not happen without the exception. I want that, I don't know who is the appropriate person, but can that be clarified?
We can allow him to answer that.
You're, you can then direct the staff to answer the question.
Staff, please answer the question.
Mayor members of council, the the zoning ordinance, chapter seven hillside pertains to any parcel or lot of record. That has fifteen percent or greater slopes and restricts the amount of land that can be developed. This subdivision ordinance is proposing platted development envelopes, which stay for the most part out of those. Areas of hillside and actually are, as was stated earlier. The major hillside portions of the property consisting of approximately twenty seven acres will be set aside and preserved and dedicated to the town. So they will never be built on. The answer, simply, there are two lots, thirty eight acres of our eighteen and thirty eight acres of our thirty five. Where one home could go on each of those lots and effectively they could develop. On the ridge line or or anywhere else with twenty percent disturbance. On the R thirty five piece and twenty five percent disturbance on the R eighteen piece. And that's in the zoning ordinance, and they're they're not asking to change that. They're effectively proposing to reduce that substantially.
So are you saying there will be fewer homes built on the upgrade of these hills, or there will be more?
There will be no homes on the most substantial portions of hillside.
My reason for questioning this is that I don't know how many of you follow wildfire information. At this point in time, federal government is asking local, local government to take a look at the fact that we shouldn't be building it all. Wildfire areas, and that if we are building, we should absolutely not be building. And that if we are building, we should absolutely not be building on slopes that go up because where does fire go? Fire goes up. I'm long past trying to, to say, I want my town to seem nice. I really am. That's, that's, everybody has different definitions. But I'll tell you, I got evacuated for the Apoteo fire last year and I didn't know if I'd have a home to come home to. I have friends who lost family in the Paradise fire. I don't know how many of you were here for last year's fire. I am opposed to anything that is going to put us at higher risk for fire. And so that's the reasoning behind my questions. So thank you for listening.
I'm sorry, you lived on Kenridge Canyon Springs Drive? You're my neighbor. I sent out the notice to evacuate you. I apologize. We had to evacuate as well. Come introduce yourself, please.
Can I, can I ask a question, Mr. Sims? Mr. Sims. Item seven, agenda item seven. To me specifically relates to public versus private road. What we're doing is a global discussion now. I think maybe one person has discussed public versus private road. Are we going to have a global discussion and then go to item seven, agenda item seven? Or are we going to deal with these items as they come?
Mr. Vice Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, you should, your subdivision ordinance requires five separate hearings. You've opened up the hearing on item one. You are taking testimony regarding, as you point out regarding a number. But I, I think you as the governing, you as the public body can allow that knowing, and I suspect there will be fewer comments when you get to the letter because they are, I agree with you. They are now talking about items that are not currently pending for this hearing, but that doesn't mean you can't listen to them and factor that in when we come later. I think what we ought to, ought to do though, is they, they ought not to be able to repeat themselves the second hearings. Second, third, fourth, fifth.
Thank you. I just wanted the clarification.
You are, you are accepting testimony on, it sounds like almost all five.
I mean, right? Good evening. Eileen Wright, Cave Creek resident. Let's stop pretending that there is any justification for obliterating this subdivision ordinances with this, these five exceptions. The five exceptions to the subdivision ordinance are solely put forth to maximize the profit for the developer at the expense of the people in this town. There will be a price to pay if you allow this overuse of this beautiful property, which in the future will not be beautiful anymore. There is not a never ending supply of land in our town. Developers generally do not really put a lot of attention into the, the damage or potential damage they will put when they are doing construction. We do. We live here. There is not a never ending land. We must take care of it. The developers motives are clear. They want the town to remove most of the restrictions covering the parcel in question in order to maximize their profit. By overloading all of the land as much as they can. The staff findings for approval of these exceptions are incomprehensible. There is no compelling reason for these exceptions. To change public streets to private streets is incompatible with the general plan and the subdivision ordinance in question. Our goal as citizens here tonight, mine particularly, is to protect our dense rural way of life. Many here, particularly Anna Marzola, have been fighting for a long time to protect our low density property. Mostly I am standing here tonight because I very strongly am against all of these five exceptions and hope that you will vote against them. Thank you. Jay Cruz. Eugene Erickson.
Good evening. My name is Gene Erickson. I live directly across the street. The villa is a black mountain. It appears to me that we're selling to the highest bidder. We're selling our landscape, our beauty, our mountains to whoever gives the most money. I just came back from a trip to San Francisco and was horrified at the landscape that I saw there. It was just nothing but homes. And it appears to me that we're going to allow that to happen here and any place else that a developer wants to come in and make a profit. I refer to the subdivision Gallo, Galloway Ridge, where they've got 68 homes there that are just crowded together. We obviously have a water issue here. You have 68 new homes there and a potential 63 homes over here. Where's the water coming from? We're selling ourselves out. Keep it the way it is. Thank you.
Carol Erickson. Dr. Ed Samples.
Most of you should run for the door. Doc Samples, 5747 Paseo. I live right behind this property. When I moved here in 2004 and bought my property, I went down to town hall here and I looked at the map. And at that time, they were all one acre, single family homes. And when this hidden canyon hills came up a few years ago, suddenly we had the R35. And I said, that's, that's not true. And they said, oh yes, I've always been that way. I said, no, it wasn't. I don't have a photograph of it, but believe me, it's one of the reasons I bought that house. Because of the zoning. And suddenly it, and no one could answer that. I asked all the questions in city hall. No one has any idea how that got changed or when or where. There's no record of it. Anyway, as a mute point at this point, but the last time we went through this, we had a, a plot and plan. And the main concern of all us neighbors in this neighborhood is water. When the rains come, where the water is going to go because some of us live on washes that are flooding as it is now and eroding some of our properties and your, your city manager will certainly know about that. And the sewage, if I understand, the last time the sewage has to be pumped to get to our main sewage. And the pumping station was going to be put right behind my house. Which I wasn't real happy with and a lot of people complained, so they moved it. In this planning commission, when this was represented to us, I saw nothing about drainage. I saw nothing about sewage. We have no idea. I have no idea who wet, when and what. And they told us, the developer, as far as the fire department, that they had talked to the fire department and they're okay with the roads and the size and they can turn their equipment around, everything. One of the planning commissions, well, can I see that report? And their response is, well, we don't have that report, but we'll get it to you. Raises a lot of questions for us to go forward and I don't know if you know more about it than I do, but we certainly as the public don't have a good idea exactly what they have planned. Thank you.
Robert Peterson.
I wanted to save my comments. Is the developer going to make comments here this evening? And I wanted to save my comments till I found out a little bit more information about what was going on. Is that possible?
We've got, we've got several more issues coming up on the.
Well, on the, on this agenda, I mean, on the seven through 12.
Yeah, seven through 12, we're, we're going to have to go through all of them one at a time. So.
I'll refrain for now.
David Phelps.
Hello, Mayor and Council. David Phelps, for the record. David Phelps, for the record, Cape Creek resident. I was on the planning commission and council when the roadway discussion was presented and debated ad nauseam about public versus private streets. And I have had discussions lately with people about that concept. And the concept was pretty easy 25, 30 years ago. 30 years ago, when you came out here, you could easily identify what was happening with those who felt that the exclusive gated private roads syndrome was going to be their nirvana, that they could have their areas of privacy and exclusivity. But they needed to use the road past your house to get there. So in order to create equity, we created this part of the subdivision standards. And it includes all the discussions tonight. It's all about equity. It's all about looking around this valley, how its development patterns are set and going to these different locations and saying, now would you want this in your community? And 25, 30 years ago, we said, no, no, we don't want the private streets. We want the wider roadways and we will take that suffering of the wider roadway so that a horse trailer can turn around. A landscaper with a trailer can turn around. Somebody hauling a car can turn around. A garbage truck can turn around. A fire truck can get through. A concrete truck can make a delivery. Look how many deliveries are now done by larger and larger vehicles for the convenience of us not having to go anywhere to do anything. We just order it all in. And now you're seeing 35 foot long Amazon trucks going down driveway after driveway. I mean, it's all over the place. The reason for the need for the wider roads is because of the vehicles we like to drive. We're not all in electric cars yet that are the size of Bruce Ireland's. We are in, we're in our pickups and our SUVs and our horse trailers. And so we need to keep the road with determination as, as it's been for almost 30 years wide. And what, what we'll have on the side of those roads is habitat area that can be utilized for water lines, sewer lines, electric lines. You communications lines, gas lines and trails. And so there seems to be this mindset that if we privatize the roads and bring them in, that we will be able to utilize more of the natural living desert. Well, it's kind of a false belief. You're going to have an amount of that desert scraped off no matter what you do here tonight. And no matter what they, the development industry comes forward with in its final assessment. And on top of that, this is just a stair step in the, we need relief package. Nobody's going to be able to go over there and put as many units as they're proposing without needing more relief. And that's just the way the development industry works us down and works you down and gets what they want out of the deal. I don't support this amendment being approved. I believe that we should hold the standards of approval in the subdivision ordinance on each and every item and that it would take a clear issue that wouldn't take five or six of the issues to be adjudicated. It would just be maybe one, maybe two. But this almost looks like they need a whole new different zoning category. They need completely different standards for their mountainside development. And maybe that's true. Maybe that is true. Thank you.
I have no further slips.
That's all of them?
That's all that I have.
All right, we're back to council. These are the issues that make it so much fun. Mr. Sims, you look like you've got something to say. You're taking your mask off, which.
What I think we should acknowledge with the vice mayor said, and I want to make sure the person's in this room and listening on the TV outside and the applicant, he or she is here. We, you have accepted a variety of comments during this first item one. I think when we get to the second, third and fourth, fifth, I think you as a chair need to say, everyone is allowed to speak, but to the extent you've already spoken, you need not speak again. And I think so, but I do think we need to make sure everyone is aware of these are five separate action. But I think you blur, the public blurred it with their multiple conversation.
Right. At this, at this point, would be appropriate to hear from council from the developer.
Good evening. Susan Demmett with Yama and Burnham here on behalf of the New Wilson Trust. The owners of the Hidden Canyon property. I'm also a resident of the town of Cape Creek. I will, I'm going to go through sort of just a quick global presentation, talk a little bit more specifically about the roadway issue that's on this specific agenda item. But I want to just give you sort of a global overview. Some of us you have heard from Luke already. So start with the general plan. We've heard a lot of discussion about the general plan that was just reapproved or approved this year. The general plan for this property calls for, and I've got it up here on the screen, two different medium residential classifications. The, the northern half of the property, which has the R35 zoning has a medium residential one classification, which allows up to 1.24 units per acre. That would be consistent with the general plan, a density of that. That would allow about 47 lots on that portion of the property per the general plan. The medium residential two classification, which per the general plan is on the southern 38 acres, allows up to 2.42 dwelling units per acre. That's the R118 portion of this property that would allow an additional 91 lots. Just to be clear, you know, that is what the general plan as approved allows for on this property. If you go to the next slide. This is the zoning that has been in place since the town has been incorporated. So since 1986, the zoning in this property has not changed. We are not requesting to change the zoning on this property today. We are working within the existing zoning. So R35, minimum 35,000 square foot lots on 38 acres, R118, minimum 18,000 square foot lots on 38 acres. We are complying with those zoning requirements. There has been a comment about the general plan as it relates to the subdivision exceptions that are on the table tonight. And I think the point that I do want to make, because your general plan does include language that says the zoning ordinance, the subdivision ordinance are incorporated into the general plan. In the subdivision ordinance in section one, the very first chapter of the subdivision ordinance is an entire several pages dedicated to amendments to the subdivision ordinance, appeals of subdivision ordinance requirements and exceptions to the subdivision ordinance. So the subdivision ordinance itself, as incorporated into the general plan, incorporates the opportunity for subdivision exception requests and acknowledges that there might be specific circumstances like the one we're talking about tonight, where you have the opportunity to listen to our justification and make that determination as to whether or not those subdivision exceptions are appropriate. So from my view, you know, this is consistent with the general plan because the subdivision ordinance has included that, that procedure within it. If you move to the next slide. I'm going to go quickly through. So this is, this is several next several slides are the preliminary flat itself. You can keep going. Let's see, probably keep going. Let's go one more. So I'm going to talk about the subdivision exception request that's on the table right now. And then at the end, I want to talk a little bit more globally about the plan. This item seven, this subdivision exception request regarding the private access roads. We've heard a number of specific comments about that. You know, what I do want to make clear, and we made this clear at the planning commission hearing, and it is not our intent to have private gated roads within this community. It is actually not even our intent to have private roads with no public access. We have agreed that public access easements will be provided over the entire roadway. We have agreed that public access easements will be provided over the entire roadway tract. The difference here in the roadway width, the roadway that we are proposing to construct is the exact same roadway width that you require for your public roads. So thirty-two feet, thirty-six feet, give or take, I think, depending on the circumstances. That is the width that our roads will be. We are not requesting to change the pavement width for the roads. The only request is to reduce the right-of-way from eighty feet to fifty feet. That road will still stay within the fifty feet. The public water and sewer lines will stay within that fifty feet. What this allows us to do is bring the lots closer to the roadway itself and repurpose, you know, what was referred to by one of the speakers as, you know, native vegetation tracks along the road, is to repurpose that into a larger common area tract that we, that I'll talk about here in a minute. So in this instance, you know, we are using the subdivision exception request simply to minimize the amount of disturbance overall within the community. This allows us to bring those lots closer to the road. We're not otherwise trying to change the scheme. We're gonna allow public access, we'll have public trails along the roads, public water and sewer lines, public access to the roads through a public access easement dedicated to the town. That is what is proposed. If you can go to the next slide, you can keep going to, let's see, go through that one, the next one. I'll come back to these, next one. So this slide, just to give you a concept of what has been discussed with town staff and the developer and our engineers have worked through this, the red lines, the perimeter through the project, both along the public access road, the private street with public access road, and then through the open space area is the trail system that is proposed within this community. We will work with the town to determine what that trail condition will actually look like, but that will be constructed and installed by the developer. When they, when the subdivision is constructed, that will be maintained by the homeowners association that is built. That will be a publicly dedicated trail easement for equestrians, for hikers, for mountain bikers. You know, I don't know what else we could, we could fold into that, but that is intended to be for non-motorized vehicles, a trail providing public access through this community and to connect to the system that is off Suri through Go John to get you back into Cave Creek Regional Park. That also includes a trail connection from the entrance of this community out to the town's newly constructed trail along Cave Creek Road. And if you could go to the next slide. And then this slide represents the common area open space. This really is the goal behind all of the exception requests that we have included in this preliminary plat. Because this allows us to put in one single common area tract, twenty-seven acres of the overall seventy-six acre site, which is thirty-five percent of the site area, which will be in a publicly, public access, publicly dedicated common area tract, preserved open space, not to be touched. That is really the entire goal, is to keep the development off of the hillside areas on the lower reaches of the site. You have multifamily immediately adjacent to us along Cave Creek Road. You have a number of new single-family homes constructed adjacent to us on smaller lots. This is a transitional development plan, but at the end of the day, the goal was to minimize disturbance of the hillside overall. And so this is the result, the trails in this twenty-seven acres of open space is really what the subdivision exception requests allow us to do. If you could go to the next slide. We've talked a little bit, and I just, I do want to emphasize this because again, we're not proposing to amend the general plan. We're not proposing to amend the zoning. This is a subdivision request only. So the general plan supports substantially more density on this property. The zoning supports substantially more density on this property. We have a certificate of assured water supply that was renewed last year that is sufficient for sixty-three lots on this property. We are proposing forty-eight, and that's a density of point six three units per acre. The entire property could be subdivided for development with no dedicated common area open space. That is what the existing zoning allows. I believe that's consistent with plats that have been approved on this property in the past. Next slide. And so just, you know, kind of in a closing commentary, we talked about the general plan, we talked about the zoning, there was some discussion about the hillside regulations. We have proposed no exceptions to the town's hillside regulations or ordinances. We will comply one hundred percent with the hillside ordinance requirements. The subdivision exception request, we've talked about one, we'll go through the rest of those, but this is forty-eight lots on seventy-six acres, a point six three unit per acre density. This allows us to give water back to the town because we are only going to use our assured water supply for our forty-eight lots where we have an approval from ADWR for sixty-three. We have twenty-seven acres of open space. We have proposed to construct and maintain an extensive public trail network on the property. And overall, the goal of this subdivision, and what we have worked very hard over the last several years with town staff, is to create a development plan that works within the existing entitlements, minimizes our hillside disturbance, minimizes disturbance overall, and maximizes benefits to the town. And we believe this is in conformance with the goals and intent of the general plan in the spirit of development in the town of Cape Creek. And I will talk about the other exception requests as you get to them. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mayor.
Oh, you know what? I gotta turn this councilman sober.
Mr. Thurmond, I know this is not totally germane to what we're talking about right now, but I'll ask it anyway. In today's dollars, could you address what the lots and the houses would cost if it were to, if it were to be developed today for the two, the R thirty-five and the R eighteen area?
Under the existing zoning?
With your proposed zoning. I'm sorry, with your proposed
With the proposed development plan. What, so unfortunately, I cannot answer that question. And I, and part of that is because the way that this plan has been designed and the lot layout, these will be custom homes. So this is forty-eight custom homes. You know, we won't, we will not get to the point where we can start establishing pricing for the lots themselves until we get through the subdivision process and work with the Arizona Department of Real Estate to have a subdivision public report. But I would, you know, I would say I think you could look as a point of comparison, if that's what you, you know, are interested in, as to what similar-sized lots are selling elsewhere in the town, and then individual home buyers will design and build a home on each lot.
I believe I read somewhere in a documentation, it may have been presented at the plan commission level, that the smaller lots could be sold off perhaps to one builder, and they would have a community of twenty-four lots there. Is that basically correct with the R thirty-five lots being sold assumably on an individual basis to end users or custom builders?
Well, I will tell you, it's all right, so I will tell you, when we started this process a couple of years ago, you know, we actually talked to a number of what I would call production home builders or builders that would, you know, take twenty-four of the lots and create a community. You know, this is not a site that can be mass rated as, you know, like the new homes that you have seen built behind Lowe's off Carefree Highway, completely different circumstance, but you know, this is not a production builder type site. I mean, at the most, you're going to get maybe a semi-custom builder. But we expect that even, I'm sorry, even the R one eighteen lots will be individually sold and designed. Home buyer, right home buyer.
Thank you.
I don't think I got any more, it's on, yeah, I don't think any more questions. We're back to council for a, for a motion at this point in time.
Motion to approve an exception to the subdivision ordinance requirements as they apply to this, the development reference case P dash twenty-one dash zero one, Hidden Canyon preliminary plat, specifically section two point six dash E point one, which states, "All lots and parcels shall front onto and take access from a dedicated and accepted public street classified as and developed to local collector art real street standards. The public street shall connect to the publicly dedicated and accepted street system."
Second.
Councilman, comments?
Yeah, the, the, first of all, just a general comment based on some of the comments from the public is that we all live in a house that at one time someone looked over at raw land and said, that's beautiful. I hope someone never builds on it. This is privately owned land, they're allowed to build on it. With this exception, basically, they're putting in publicly accessible streets, and the town doesn't have to maintain them. It was mentioned that these are narrower than what's called for. Schoolhouse Road is twenty-three plus feet edge to edge. Most of the streets in the town are very narrow. The last thing I want to do is say, oh, we're gonna force you to put in wide streets because that's what everyone else does. I think the narrow streets are fine, they'll figure out how to turn around fire trucks because they do it everywhere in Cave Creek. If you've been down Echo Canyon Road, that's basically a lane and a half, and yet they've never had an issue doing it, so I would support this.
I don't know, okay. Oddly enough, I was on the planning commission with Mrs. Wright in, I think, two thousand fourteen, when we saw the previous iteration of doing something along this line. And what I remember is something along the lines of a hundred and ten tiki tacks going one after another, right down the line. And we recommended against it, and the council did not approve it. I looked at this, and this is not tiki tack. This is not inappropriate. And dealing with the one issue that we're supposed to be dealing with right now, I personally don't have a problem with private roads, especially since what they're going to allow is right away for all of the town services, all of the other services, electric, gas, and everything. I actually don't think it's a bad idea to have a HOA, which I think is what's expected here, responsible for the roads within its own little community. The only, the only other thing relating to the roads is something that I had thought I was gonna say, but I've totally forgotten what it was. I will vote in favor of this, but I will leave it that unsaid.
Councilman Silva.
Is it, would I be correct, Mr. Thurmond, in saying that this item, you will have private streets, but there'll be a public overlay for use of all vehicular traffic and pedestrian traffic to have the same rights and privileges as though it were a publicly dedicated right-of-way, not private?
Correct. We have agreed that we will put a public access easement in place over the roadway tract.
Yeah.
So it functions for all intents and purposes, it's a public road.
Right, and it's, as I read the other information, it would be a thirty-two-foot pavement width.
Correct, correct.
And the right-of-way, be it fifty feet, sixty feet, or eighty feet, doesn't affect the pavement width. The pavement width is the pervious surfaces. And I live in an area that has twenty-four-foot pavement width, and it works out pretty good. But obviously, I would want to see that thirty-two-foot. I think you had dimensions and a cross-section on your plans which showed twenty-two feet, which is not the case.
No, staff has stipulated, and we have agreed that we will conform to your standard local
Right, right.
Section.
Good, thank you.
Mayor, if I could just piggyback on that. On page two oh eight of your agenda, exhibit B, are the proposed recommended conditions of approval. Item twenty-one states the applicant will provide private street improvements that include a paved width of at least thirty-two feet, unless otherwise approved by the building and fire safety official and town engineer, and be dedicated as public easements.
Right. And I remember the one thing I forgot. The one thing I forgot is that there's also a condition relating to gates. No, no gates will be allowed. Right. There's no slippery slope here. Because if we approve, having this as a public, this is a public street, it does not mean that there's a slippery slope that it'll immediately, or five years from now, become a gated street. There's a preclusion of that in the conditions.
That is condition number twenty-three that states there shall be no gates at any proposed entrance to the subdivision. And also, if you look at the minutes from the planning commission meeting held September sixteenth, that was discussed, and I also went into great detail about the steps that it would take to remove that and add a gate at some point in the future, which would require essentially an applicant coming to the town three different times to amend things and undo things to allow for a gate. And it ultimately would take town council to approve that.
Thank you.
We're, we passed the motion, we're at the motion period at this point in time, it's not something. Okay, so one of the things that's always bothered me, and with all respect for Mr. Phelps back there, is the no private, no private roads thing, and has put, put the maintenance on the town of Cave Creek at the time of that those were put into place with no way to pay for the maintenance of those things. It's always been an issue of mine, a hot button. I'm thrilled to see a subdivision actually take care of their own roads and not be gated. It's a wonderful thing. Let's go to, go to a vote on this one now. I guess I probably, probably do, well, we'll try this first. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we're good on that one.
Are you gonna, are you gonna ask us to recuse ourselves?
Bill, do they have to recuse for each item, or?
I would like that for the record.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I
Okay, yeah, go
At each vote, they will say I recuse.
Okay, go ahead, then.
I recuse.
Bob Morris, I recuse.
Thank you. No, they can't, they recuse. Yeah, yeah. All right, so agenda item number eight, council discussion approval of Hidden Canyon request for an exception to the subdivision ordinance requirements as they apply to this development reference case P dash twenty-one dash zero one, Hidden Canyon preliminary plat, specifically section two point six dash eight point six, which states, "Flaglots or parcels shall not be allowed," case E twenty-one dash zero two.
Mayor, members of council, this exception request is where the applicant is proposing eight total flaglots for the subdivision. Lots three, nineteen, twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six, thirty-five, thirty-eight, and lots forty-five comprise the eight total lots. The purpose of designing flaglots is intended to eliminate additional disturbance associated with paved streets and utility service extensions. Staff in the planning commission further recommend that all driveways will be constructed with a hard surface and be in accordance with the technical design guidelines and international fire code. The planning commission voted five in favor and one opposed to recommend approval of this exception. And the, the letter of recommendation is included in your packet on page two twelve. Essentially, we do have other developments where flaglots have been considered, contemplated, and actually implemented. The purpose of this, as stated, is to be able to pull the lots closer to the street instead of taking the street to the lots. In other words, is the best way to describe it. So instead of doing a full with street to serve one lot, you have the ability to create a flaglot, and that lot width at that point of the street is essentially the driveway width. So it allows some possibilities for shared driveway access as well as common utility service lines. So overall, much less disturbance to the finished developed site. And I'd answer any questions.
I have a question.
Vice Mayor?
Yes. Luke or Mr. Crossman, sorry, gotta be official. I'm sorry, I beat you to it, didn't I?
Well, he didn't specify what.
Current, current vice mayor.
Okay. I have one question. Is there a expect, what is the width of the pole? To the flag lot? Is it a narrow driveway or is it a wider?
Well, the, the technical design guidelines would require a minimum width of twenty, depending on grade and slope that may be greater. So it's really determined by tell. Tell the town what the slope of that driveway is within that flagpole and we'll, we'll dictate what that width of the driveway needs to be.
Okay, but it would be minimum twenty?
Minimum twenty, yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, Mr. Council.
Former vice mayor.
The current vice mayor asked part of my question. Some, some of these flagged lots. Are quite deep. The dr, I'll call it the driveway. It's considered a driveway and not a street. Which is why you're bringing forth that it would be a minimum of twenty feet wide as opposed to thirty-two feet wide. And I thought you said graded. Will it be, will it be of an, of an impervious surface?
Mayor members of council, no, the. What I refer to as grade, the grade dictates the width of the driveway. And also the, the finish material. What the town engineer is included in his review of this and his coordination of the conditions of approval with staff. Is that all driveway surfaces shall be. A hard surface and that's.
Your condition number twenty-seven.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you. The fact that these driveways, some of them are so lengthy. If you had a, an emergency vehicle, i.e. a fire engine going up there. Would there be sufficient room? To turn around and, and get out fairly quickly if they needed to go to another location?
Mayor members of council, that is an excellent question, Mr. Silva. I'm not sure what you did in a previous career, but very astute. The building and fire safety official has also reviewed these and contributed to the conditions of approval as well. Really for any lot in Cave Creek, whether it's within a subdivision or it's a meets and bounds lot. If the requirements of the international fire code and the technical design guidelines for access aren't met. So that's once again, it's a width and a length and what type of apparatus it needs to be able to support. And a building permit will not be issued for development of that lot. So there may be some lots depending on the width that would have to provide a hammerhead turnaround or something on the property in order to accommodate fire apparatus access.
Cause I, I would have a concern if you've got. Fire equipment trying to get up there and people trying to exit their property. As we saw in the fires of May of last year. It's quite chaotic. So I believe our fire. Marshall will look into that and make sure. Public safety is, is well considered and those people are protected. As opposed to having more of a street setting versus a driveway setting, especially on those lots where the flag lots are extremely. Long.
Yes, that is a consideration of the fire safety official.
Thank you.
I will ask a question and I think this goes back to a clarification of what you said before. If we did not have the flag lots allowed in order for the developer to. Develop these lots, then he would have to extend regular. Town. Roads into that area. So the flag lot allows the construction of these lots. Without making a full-fledged road going in, in certain cases.
Mayor members of council, that is precisely the point of the, the flag lot application at this point. Yes.
Thank you.
All right, well, in that case, I will open the public hearing portion of this and I have some that I'm going to read first. This one is from Sarah Foster. Her comment is. These flag lots need to be done away with. The purchaser of this property knew what they were buying. If they wanted to cram houses in, then they shouldn't have bought a steep hill. Then we have Lisa Di Addama would like her comments read aloud and she opposes is a comment. Then James Timmies. Would like his comments read aloud, says I oppose. Okay, you're on, Murray. Specifically to flag lots. Let me try and get this back on, on course.
Oh, am I waiting?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
I just hit the start button. You better go.
Again, Anna Marso, before you start ticking my clock, I'd like to, for the clarification for this from the town attorney. Private roads are agenda item number five. I didn't even get to speak on that because you guys just voted on it. How did that happen? Private road case is. Case E twenty-one oh five, private roads. So I just want, that's the clarification that I wanted. And.
Agenda five deals with lift station. I don't know what you're talking about. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry?
Agenda, agenda five deals with the ranchman lot of lift, lift station. When you refer to identified, what do you mean?
No, for this, for this case for Hidden Valley, we had oh one, we had oh two.
We had seven through, through.
Yeah, and private roads comes up. Yeah, item number eleven. So have you, have you already voted on private roads?
No, that has not been voted on yet. That's the problem was when we started down this path.
Okay.
You and others were, spoke about a number of items that were unrelated to the agenda item. The mayor allowed that to occur. Now we're trying to get the conversation back so we avoid that confusion.
Okay, I also want to clarify that in the four pages of arguments, nowhere did we mention rezoning, exceptions, amendments. What we did say was the subdivision ordinance is under the umbrella of our general plan. So I wanted to clarify that. And Lucas Ryder about history speaks. The Bob Kite property was once a grocery store. Was then became a two hundred fifty room hotel, resort hotel, and now it's Galloway Ridge. There's absolutely no guarantee that what you approve, that these developers will not have a gate. They'll just come back more and more often. I just wanted to clarify that part. Now I'll talk to flag lots.
You're on the clock.
Thank you.
And have been.
Developers seek flat lots when there's not enough land on the property for two units, but not enough street furniture. They want to build two or more units, one in front of the other. With a long, narrow strip that becomes the driveway. U S council already determined flag lights, flag lots are contrary to our GP by adopting just this year. Under the subdivision ordinance. That prohibits flag lots since nineteen ninety-nine. Our subdivision ordinance. Has never allowed flag lots. These flag lots that the applicant wants would cut up more of the scenic hillside than would otherwise occur. Our ordinance says conserve mountains and hillside in the planning area by discouraging development on slopes fifteen percent or greater. Five of these flag lots. Being proposed by this applicant are on more than a fifteen percent slope. Rationale for prohibiting flag lots in the desired for the, in the desert for some degree of uniformity in the building setbacks. Flag lots have proven to be mighty confusing to police, fire, garbage collection and other services. Ian Cardwell may rest in peace since nineteen ninety-nine thought it was better practice to prohibit, prohibit. All flag lots in our regulations than to disapprove of them on a case by case basis. The proposed flag lots violate the state fire code and present challenges for fire suppression. Our geo, our general plan. Provides goals that minimize the risk of property damage for residents. Four flag lots would provide fire department access via dead end over a hundred and fifty feet long without a turnaround. Fire vehicles would have to, would have a greater difficulty maneuvering to suppress a fire on those lots. Especially exiting the lot in reverse gear to move on to other suppressed efforts. Fire hydrants would be at least a hundred and fifty feet away on those lots. The grade on the hillside is over fifteen percent in many places. To avoid issues for fire suppression, access roadway grade should not exceed ten percent. For all these reasons, we ask you that this exception be denied.
You hit two minutes and fifty-seven seconds. That was good.
Good evening, Eileen Wright, Cave Creek resident. Anna Marshall covered this very, very thoroughly and one of the most important features of this, the flag lots, is that violates the state fire code. Also Vice Ma, Vice Mayor David Smith mentioned. That we were in the, on the planning commission together in two thousand and fourteen when Hidden Canyon came up. And at that particular time, the lots were desert rural, just as Dr. Peterson, Dr. I think his name is Peterson, no. Samples had said. So they were desert rural at one time. And he's like I am. I'm not quite sure how we got to where we are now, but the documents clearly show that. And as far as property rights. Well, property rights do not trump the general plan and zoning restrictions. That are contained in it. We need to be very aware of that at all times. Thank you.
David Phelps, Cave Creek resident. Thank you for allowing me to speak to this issue. I specifically remember flag lots because before I was a resident at Cave Creek, I was a advocate for responsible development. In the city of Scottsdale. Where we worked on desert preservation and we worked on. Trying to save the horse community in Scottsdale and we worked on rural zoning in the city of Scottsdale and you can see how well that prevailed. And then Terra Vida came along and we learned a lot about lots. We learned about density transfer. We learned about flag lots. And so one of the things that happened when I came to Cave Creek and started as a planning commission volunteer. Was developing standards that we would want to see here versus what we'd seen in growth standards across the valley and flag lots. Was one of those common enemy of residents. They're very confusing when you come up to. Two or more driveways and you're not sure because of either lighting or. Addressing. Just where in the world you are. It looks like you're driving behind somebody's house or between two people's homes to get to another person's house. And we found it. Through consensus to be that we all felt that the only reason somebody used the flag lot is because they didn't have enough land to do it right. And I think that's what's prevailing here. They don't have enough land to do it right. They don't have enough usable land to do it right. And you're seeing this many requests for exceptions. I think there's five or eight. To this one exception and I don't support the exception being approved. Thank you.
I hope we're not going to be here that long. You mean midnight? Yes, please.
There's a slide. Again, free record Susan Demett with Gamble and Burnham. So you know, you'll hear a common theme as we talk about each of these exception requests, but our goal is to. Maximize the amount of open space and hillside area that we preserve on this property. And concentrate development on the lower sort of less steep, you know, areas that are actually quite not within the hillside ordinance for the most part. This exception request, and you can see the eight stars on the map up there. Those are the eight lots where we have introduced a flag lot condition. This is not because we don't have enough land area. We have plenty of land area. If we wanted to comply with this exception request, we could. The result of that is that. The roadway system gets more extensive. A number of the lots become much larger. The twenty-seven acre open space. Tracked in conjunction with all of that shrinks and becomes less. So you know, what, what I would say is that we have taken the approach that there are certain established property rights with this. Parcel. We have tried to balance the number of interests to create the plan that you have in front of you today. No one is going to say that it's perfect in, in any respect. In the sense that. You know, this was through a lot of work with staff to compromise to try to, to decide what was truly important till we could find that balance in this land plan and our. At the end of the day, I know our view is that these eight flag lots, which will comply with all of the fire code requirements, they will comply with all the requirements of your. Building and safety officials. And a lot of that is encompassed in the conditions of approval. And we believe that this represents the more responsible way to develop this plan and again allows us to preserve as much open space as we, as we have on the site. Fire safety trumps everything. I mean, if you've been doing this long enough, I think, you know, one of the things I've learned in my twenty-plus years. Working on land use issues is that. Public works issues, what a trash truck can do and what a fire truck can do. That's how our communities get designed. I'm like that, you know, you, those are, those are things that you do not. Push up against. And so each of those flag lots and every lot within this community, including the roadway. Will fully comply with what your fire safety and building officials require as this goes to final engineering.
Questions? Thank you. We're back to council for a motion, please.
I'll do it again. Motion to approve an exception to the subdivision, subdivision ordinance requirements as they apply to this development reference case P dash twenty-one dash zero one Hidden Canyon preliminary plat specifically. Section two point six dash eight point six which states flag lots are partial, so not be allowed. If you drive around town, you can find quite a few examples and there, I guess they wouldn't be called technically flag lots since they're not in a subdivision, but we have actually quite a few homes that have. Shared driveways. I think the, the biggest one I've seen is four houses where there's a single driveway and it branches off. I know I've got one client that you go down a rat's nest of roads behind houses to get to. So this is nothing new. And if you went and visited those homes, I don't think you'd say this is horrible and we need to change, change that. I look at this as a way to, we get quite a bit of open space and I don't see that flag loss or, or an obnoxious thing.
I would prefer not to have flag lots. I think there's good reason for our policy to oppose flag lots. But I also see the way that this is developed. I've, I've walked the. The area here. It's not easy to get the lots in there. And there are good building lots that they couldn't do properly. Without either having a lot more roads. without either having a lot more roads or having flag lots. So I, I think in this case, the flag lots are acceptable. They're not something I like, but I find it acceptable considering the alternative.
And the how the property directly due east of me has, has a flag lot and the pole is one foot wide for a water line. People did all kinds of goofy stuff in Cave Creek. All those in favor of motions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. I'd purely have it. And item number nine, council discussion approval of Hidden Valley, or Hidden Canyon request for an exception to the subdivision ordinance requirements as they apply to this development reference case P dash twenty-one dash zero one, Hidden Canyon preliminary plat specifically section four point five dash A dot, dot ten, which states street blocks shall not exceed one thousand three hundred and twenty feet or eight lot widths, whichever is greater, nor be less than six hundred feet in length, measured street center line to street center line, case E dash twenty-one dash zero three.
Thank you, mayor members of council. This case, as you stated, the applicant's proposing an exception to the subdivision ordinance, which requires that street blocks do not exceed one thousand three hundred and twenty feet or eight lot widths, nor be less than six hundred feet in length. The proposed layout of the subdivision considers the natural topography of the site and the proposed streets follow natural slopes. And if this exception were not granted, what you would see is every either eight lot widths or thirteen, twenty feet, you would see a perpendicular street being put in to allow. I, truly, I don't know what the purpose of this requirement in the subdivision ordinance is. It's, to me, doesn't really make a whole lot of sense unless you're sitting on forty acres of flat dirt where you can provide rectilinear lots, rectilinear street configurations around a grid-like pattern is really what, what this condition in our subdivision ordinance requires. So what the applicant's asking for is an exception. And as stated, all street improvements shall be reviewed and approved by both the fire official and town engineer. And then lastly, the planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of this request in their recommendation letters on page two thirteen of your packet.
Question for council?
Mayor.
Former Vice Mayor Sova.
Mr. Councilman, has there been any more discussion relative to East Blue Ridge Drive to connect it into the, that north-south street, making it a third means of egress and ingress?
Mayor members of council, as a matter of fact, if, if you look at the plat itself, Blue Ridge and Utam rights of way both touch the property at this location. The applicant will allow for cross-access there. At this point, I don't believe it's going to require a formal easement to appear on the final plat, but the town does have capability to provide for emergency access or additional access there in the future if necessary, because the, the right of way does touch their, their street configuration at that point.
So it would be considered for emergency access on the.
At this time, that's what we've discussed, yes.
Anything else?
Yeah, this one follow-up question. Would the topography in that area precluded from making it a reasonable permanent means of egress and ingress?
The, I believe the site slope right there is approximately ten percent. I would defer to how on, on what the feasibility of extending probably about a twenty-foot in distance length of roadway. At this point, really what I, what should say staff, but I'll say myself has contemplated is more of an emergency access. The area is, if you're familiar with that little knoll right there, is already cleared out. So I, I don't know if there would need to be much in terms of additional surface provided to allow for that additional emergency access.
Is this something the applicant has seen, talked about and agreed to?
Yes, yes, they're aware of this.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman McGuire? Yeah, I, I'm a little bit confused by your language. They're aware of this. Has they in fact acquiesced? Do they agree that this be a part of the approval?
The, the town has every right and ability to extend the right of way to touch their, their street because their street in this location is proposed at the property line. So that's what we're still trying to determine between the applicant and myself is whether or not a separate formal emergency ingress easement needs to be recorded or not. At this time, we're both in agreement that it's probably not likely that a separate instrument would need to be.
So there's agreement between you and the applicant that this is.
That's correct.
That this is really a good idea to have that. Yeah, that, that would be my concern. I'm not too concerned about how long the block is, but I'm certainly concerned about the safety and emergency access. It does address that issue and I'd like to see whatever emergency access can take place being there. That's, that's the really critical issue is safety.
I have nothing. That all from council. Okay, so I've got several here again. This is from Lisa Di Addamo. I would like my comments read aloud. She opposes. James Hemis opposes. And that was only two on, on number nine that I had.
Anna Marcello. Anna Marcello. Street widths. The state fire code requires a clearance of twenty feet in width along all roads. The two proposed subdivision roads are twenty-two feet in width and provide the required twenty-foot clearance for fire vehicles. No parking can be permitted at any time on the roads. The longer than permitted subdivision roads proposed in cases three and four would extend fire response times. Collectively, the proposed design would significantly hamper fire suppression efforts. This exception cannot be allowed. Imagine a brush fire in this subdivision that goes to Little John, Go John Canyon, all the way to the Cave Creek recreational area. All this information on fire didn't come from me. I did investigate, but I did spend a lot of time with a twenty-eight-year-old veteran fire chief that I got my information from. So for, for these reasons, we believe this exception should not be allowed. Eileen Wright. David Phelps.
Thank you again, David Phelps, to speak on item nine. I can answer a question that the planner has wondered about. The thirteen hundred and twenty foot length or eight lots is divided by the eight. You take the eight, divide the thirteen, twenty, you get a hundred and sixty-five foot width, which in our nomenclature and land planning is about a one acre lot. So back when we were developing the subdivision ordinance, we decided that the length that you could go would be about ten acres before you would have an intersecting street as a maximum. That's why we have the thirteen, twenty as a number. It's not an arbitrary number as projected by the planning commission. It is a mathematical equation that equated to one acre zoning. So in this case, where you have smaller lots configured, configured, but, and they meet the minimum lot size per square footage length and width. This wasn't designed to deal with the smaller lots. That's where we are with number nine and that answers the age-old question, where did that number come from? Okay, thanks.
I have no further sense.
Again, Susan Demmett with Cambridge and Burnham. So the, and I do actually appreciate the background on the thirteen hundred and twenty foot block length because you do wonder sometimes, it's different every city. And so it is, it is nice to know that there's some history there. At the end of the day, this is not necessarily, this isn't a fire safety or access issue. This is, in most cities, you look at block length and it's sort of a visual aesthetic concern that you want a break in the street length over course of time. It's not going to increase or decrease fire access to any of these properties, whether there is an intervening, you know, perpendicular street along the way. And actually, if you look slide nine up for me. If you look at the, the, the red line and so that represents the street length that we're talking about, you know, we do have a, a little bit of articulation in that straight length. It's not a two thousand foot, you know, run of street. This again could be remedied as with all of our other exception requests by introducing more roadway corridors, increasing disturbance. It would reorient some of the lots a little bit. We did not find, you know, I don't, I don't know that there's really any significant safety issue at all with this public exception request, which is what the planning commission commentary sort of reflected. To answer council member McGuire's question, you know, Luke and I did speak earlier today about the Blue Ridge Drive connection point, you know, we will make sure that our public access easement that is over top our roadways is fully sufficient, not just at that location, but for the entire roadway corridor for public safety, you know, and emergency access. And Luke and I did discuss that as we work through final engineering, we can figure out, you know, what that, if there is anything that needs to be done where that connection point may be in the future, but to make sure that that can happen.
Thank you.
So we're back to council and this one is number nine and I'll take the pressure off of Councilman. Oh, oh, former, former Vice Mayor Sova, please make a motion.
More to come, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve an exception to the subdivision ordinance requirements as they apply to this development in Perrin reference case P dash twenty-one dash O one hyphen Hidden Canyon preliminary plat and Perrin specifically section four point five dash eight point ten, which states, street blocks shall not exceed thirteen hundred and twenty feet or eight in Perrin eight lot widths, whichever is greater, nor be less than six hundred feet in length, measured street center line to street center line.
Second. Former Vice Mayor Sova.
Yeah, my comment here is that this is not a twenty-two foot pavement. It's not proposed being a twenty-four foot pavement. I think it's on the record. It'll be a minimum of a thirty-two foot pavement width in a fifty-foot right of way. So I believe it's not a country lane. So I believe it's totally acceptable and proper for this item to be considered and I was supportive.
Okay, actually, I'd, I'd also like to thank Mr. Phelps for clarifying what the history was on it. But I'd like to say, since you based it on a ten acre lot, yes, that is arbitrary. So but I, I also support this. Come in. Yeah, I, I, I'm not sure how to handle this procedurally. I, I, I will support it with the hope that we recognize that the, you have two roads that are going to be next to one another. There'll be your road and there'll be also Odum. And there needs to be shielding along there in terms of vegetation. And I think that your customers will want shielding from the neighboring street and those people will want shielding from this new development. So I will support it. I'm I don't think procedurally I can say at this point that that's required because we're at the voting phase, but I will support it.
Councilman DeFender?
Yeah, when I look at the, the map of that road, it's not a full straight shot. It does have that crook in there and I really don't see we're having a little cul-de-sac off the one side would make it any more, I don't think it would improve anything. So I don't have a problem with supporting this.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I totally have it. Motion carries five zero.
Got to ask those guys.
She, she, she sees us. Yeah.
I recuse.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. We're going to, we're going to take a five-minute recess here. Back to council and, and I believe that Marie's not there. Oops.
Very, very integral component of a meeting is to have a recorder mayor. So.
Yeah, I know. I gotta wait. Even though I said five minutes and I stopped it at five minutes.
We can make her feel uncomfortable when she comes back in the room.
We're just staring at her.
Just stare at that doorway.
But we had to make sure Bob was here recused. That's very important.
Yeah, and, but there's nobody to take that, to take the recusal.
Well, then we can do what we want.
Okay, stare.
Conversation ended.
Okay, we're back, we're back to council for agenda item number ten. Council discussion approval of Hidden Canyon request for an exception to the subdivision ordinance requirements as they apply to this development reference case P dash twenty-one dash zero one, Hidden Canyon, Canyon preliminary plat specifically section four point five dash A dot eleven, which states the maximum length of cul-de-sac street shall be six hundred feet or four lot widths on one side of the street, whichever is greater, case E dash twenty-one dash zero four.
Mayor members of council, based on the previous request and, and the enlightenment received from a member that spoke, I'm even more perplexed because this requires, the subdivision ordinance requires that limitation of length of cul-de-sac street of six hundred feet and four lot widths. So six hundred feet divided by four lot widths would be a hundred and fifty lot width, when the previous condition required that lot width be at least a hundred and sixty-five. And further, R thirty-five zoning allows a hundred and forty-five minimum lot width and R eighteen, a hundred and twenty. So both of those requirements would be substandard to what the zoning would allow. At any rate, the applicant is requesting an exception from this subdivision ordinance in order to allow an elongated cul-de-sac street and they are still required to meet the components of the technical design guidelines as well as the international fire code. Once again, the planning commission on this case E twenty, twenty-one oh four voted unanimously to recommend approval of this exception. And really the purpose of this elongated cul-de-sac street would be to allow for the property if the last slide showed the street going south, this is that area that comes in and goes around to the north, ending at lot thirty-eight, I believe. It allows the streets to be designed within the, the, the grade of the property and, and go with the natural slope of the property without having, once again, intersecting streets providing additional accesses to properties. It's not necessary in this case. So I'll answer any questions, council man.
I have a question for the applicants.
Councilman McGuire.
Yeah.
For the applicant.
For the applicant.
Wow.
Is this a point that I should be?
Yeah, you, yeah, oh yeah, go ahead.
And, and Luke perhaps as well. Ms. Demmett, I had contacted you earlier about my concern. If I were buying a home, if I was on such a long cul-de-sac, I would be very concerned about it, even though it, I respect that it does represent the, that what you're proposing does represent the requirements that you have in terms of the standards of fire safety. I would be much happier if there were some other access that came from another direction. There is private land to the west of where your development is going and I would be happier if there were some kind of easement made such that when that land to the west is developed, there might be emergency access. Have you considered this? I think you said you checked with your engineers.
Councilman McGuire.
Yes.
So we, we did discuss this internally and with our engineer. I, you know, that, that request creates a number of, I think, practical challenges. You know, one is that it is not a single property to our west. There are probably four or five or six properties that are, you know, layered together before you actually get over to, I think it's Rancho Manana Road, which is a private road and it might be gated at that location, if I remember correctly.
It is.
And so in order to provide, you know, setting the topography aside, which is challenging in that location, because those lots are sort of up and over the hill, in order to provide an access that has any potential to mean, you know, anything meaningful, you would have to have an agreement from each of those individual property owners to the west to have a public access easement cross through their properties, you know, to, to, to make that connection. You know, they're all vacant lots today. I don't know what the development plans are. I don't know what the development timeline is. And so you know, from our standpoint, I don't think that that's a, that creates a, a practically meaningful solution that anybody could rely on. It's sort of a what if, and it's what if do we put it in the right location even? Because we would then be dictating where those adjacent lots would have to, you know, build their homes or divide their access points. I mean, from a practical standpoint, I think those lots are all going to have private access drives that come off that direction and there probably is not going to be, they're probably not going to want a public access road through their properties to get through our subdivision up over the hill. So from, I mean, so from a, for a pure legal standpoint, you could probably do something like that and put an easement in place. I think that that really is a challenging request from a practical standpoint, and that's not something that we support. I think we looked, you know, as I worked with the town staff and the building officials, we have provided and increased with, I think the bold actually of the cul-de-sac is much larger than standard and typical, again, to make sure it can accommodate fire department access. You've got fire hydrant spacing, you know, all along that corridor as well with, with this, with the town standard 32 foot paved surface. And so we believe that that provides adequate fire safety access to that portion of the site. And I think having the hydrants in that location is, you know, that's a benefit to not just our subdivision, but it provides a water source closer to all of those other properties to the west.
I discussed this today with Mr. Silva and looked at the lots that are to the west there, and I could envision someone coming in and developing that as a subdivision. And if indeed that were developed as a subdivision, that would make it easier for the town to mandate that there had, there be some kind of access across there. Yes, Mr. Councilman, please.
Mayor members of council, in order to that going through a subdivision plat process for the remaining vacant parcels there would be very difficult. They would have to take access from a publicly dedicated right of way. So you would effectively be requiring them, or the subdivision ordinance requires them to go all the way out to Rancho Manana Boulevard in front of Tonto and acquire all of those easements and convert them to town right of way in order to even consider a, a plat for those lots. So.
Is that the Andorra Hills neighborhood?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah. Tom, you don't want to touch that, believe me.
I didn't.
Don't want to touch that.
Thank you.
Any other thing else from council on this one? All right, we are at, okay, I've got public hearing. Lisa Di Adamo, she opposes. And James Hemis oppose. We're on number 10 now. Don't say Elaine. Hi, David.
Let's talk about why in the world would you have a maximum length for a cul-de-sac streets? Because we saw the development of dead ends as having a certain amount of benefit, but you didn't want them to be ridiculously long. Now, I realize that since Caha Springs has been approved, that even I have to agree, it gets a little more moot. However, there was a formula for it. And I would like to engage Luke in a conversation, not tonight, but after hours or before hours, so that we can talk through these gradations and how this thing became. And maybe it would help the future for considerations of how we got here and why would we want to stay? All right.
Is this a conversation that should include alcohol again? Do we have any more, Marie? That's all. We're back to council.
I'll make the motion.
Former Vice Mayor Silva.
Motion to approve an exception to the subdivision ordinance requirements as they apply to this development and Perrin reference case P dash 21 dash O one hyphen hidden canyon preliminary plat on Perrin specifically section four dash five dash A dash, I'm sorry, point 11, which states in quotes, the maximum length of cul-de-sac street shall be 600 feet or four lot widths on one side of the street, whichever is greater.
Second.
Former Vice Mayor comments?
Yeah, this, this is one that actually makes sense only if you were in Flagstaff or in the Midwest or on the East Coast. The reason you want short cul-de-sacs is so when your snowplows go in there, there's enough to where they don't pile up on the sides because you're not going down a straight street. And they limit it because you would have to truck out the snow because you run out of room to put it by plowing if you had a long street. So with this in Arizona, I've got to see fallible snow in Cave Creek, so I support this.
That is an intriguing explanation. Thank you.
It's a true one.
Yeah, I'll bet it is. Yeah. Well, that's one of the best explanations of a vote I've ever heard. I actually thought that it would be a convenience for vehicles to turn around like fire trucks and other vehicles, but, but I'm going to vote in favor of this too. Comments, anyone else? All those, oh wait, yeah, no, we're good. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that one carries five zero also.
And two recusals.
You know, we're going to get to the items later on that you guys can participate in. It'll be great, it'll be fun to have you back. Yeah. Jan, uh, Jan item number 11, council, council discussion approval of Hidden Valley, or Hidden Valley, why do I keep saying it? Is that that?
Salad dressing?
Is that the salad dressing? Yeah, golly gee. Hidden Canyon request for, for an exception to the subdivision ordinance requirements as they apply to the development Prince reference case P dash 21 dash zero one, Hidden Canyon preliminary plat closed branch specifically section 4 dot 6 dash B dot 19, which states all subdivision streets and roadways shall be dedicated to the town as public rights of way case E dash 21 dash 05.
Mayor members of council, as I stated at the outset, condition or exceptions E 2101 and E 2105 are very similar. They, they do mean different things. You can't really have one without the other in this instance. So what council has approved by earlier action is to allow an exception to allow all parcels within the subdivision to take access on, onto an undedicated street. This would allow basically private streets. As stated earlier, these will be given a public easement overlay. And there are several conditions that would take several actions and a good amount of time to, to attempt to undo in the future. So those, those conditions, once again, just briefly are probably Mr. Silva has a better.
Former Vice Mayor.
Believe that 2021, 22, 23, 27 are the four conditions that deal primarily with the inclusion of private streets and how those are managed and by the town engineer and fire official. Once again, the town will still require that a final plat dedicate public easements and that the roadways are improved to town standards, subject to review and approval by the town engineer and fire official, and also that no gates shall be installed. The planning commission voted to recommend approval of this request by a vote of five in favor and one opposed. That letter of recommendation is included in your packet, page 215. And I'd answer any questions, Councilman.
Question from council? Former Vice Mayor Silva, has he, have you found something in the?
Well, it's a question and, and the, under the item 11, the council action needed. Am I misreading this or just getting tired? Where it references the maximum length of a cul-de-sac at 600 feet.
Oh, my goodness, in the motion, in the action.
Yep. You're not misreading it.
I'm not misreading it.
Well, you're not.
Still awake.
That's a little problem.
So when we get to it, we're going to have to wing it and read it from the, from the description up above. Yeah.
Are, we're looking at page seven on the agenda?
Yeah.
Yes. Council needed the maximum, oh, it does repeat. You could substitute the maximum length of cul-de-sac streets essentially for the, the description that's bold and all caps. All subdivision streets and roadways shall be dedicated to the town as public rights of way. You could substitute those two pieces in your, in your motion, Mr. Mayor.
You would have to change the section from the 4.5 to the 4.6 though, correct?
Yeah, I can't do all the work for you, Mr. Silva, but yes.
I have a comment, but I'm not going to let it pass.
We'll save that. Sure.
Any other questions in council on this one? All right, move to, did you have something?
No.
Move to public hearing then on number 11, which is Lisa Di Adamo again. My comments read aloud, she opposes. And James Hemis read aloud oppose.
Only that 165 of your citizens, including myself, are opposed to private roads, period. Thank you.
Six seconds. You wouldn't even, you would not even have made it on a bull ride.
David Phelps.
So from, this David Phelps again, from seven to 11, I still oppose the private streets element of this subdivision. I know that you have given us assurances, but from what I've seen over a short time or last 30 years, things change. That's what we can count on. And so as I said before, this is just a stair step in this development. They will come back, they will need more, and we will have granted them this tonight, and we will grant them more later. That is a very constrained parcel to develop. I've looked at it enough through topography and land use. There's no way they're going to be able to do this without needing more favors and friends at town hall.
That it, Marie?
We have no others.
That's all?
Yes.
We're back to council, please, somebody want to, Mr. Sims, is it okay for us to do this? Since the motion portion of this does not.
Just, just need to ask the applicant.
Oh, I'm sorry. Says no.
I think Luke had a good suggestion and just take the, take the sentence from right above. And right, yeah. Yeah, see, there's also the streets shall be dedicated to town both right of way. Say that instead of the maximum length.
I'll make the motion. Change it to four, five.
Better do it right.
That will.
Okay.
As the question.
Please, please, former Vice Mayor.
Motion to approve an exception to the subdivision ordinance requirements as they apply to this development and Perrin reference case P dash 21 dash O one hyphen hidden canyon preliminary plat and Perrin specifically section 4.6 dash B dash or point 19, which states in quotes, all subdivision streets and roadways shall be dedicated to town as a public right of way case E hyphen 21 hyphen O5.
Second.
Comments?
No, I think we've discussed this.
Yep, we're good. Okay. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed? Okay, you're, you're, I haven't written, I hadn't even written the vote down yet and you already refused on the next.
Well, they could.
He's fast. I didn't hear you. All right, here we go. Council discussion approval of Hidden Canyon preliminary plat P dash 21 dot zero one, or dash zero one, a 48 lot residential subdivision located on property having an area of approximately 76 acres. Mr. Councilman.
Mayor members of council, the planning commission by a vote of five to one voted to recommend approval subject to the conditions as contained within exhibit B of your packet tonight. I just want to be clear that approval of a preliminary plat by the town council does not guarantee approval of development plans or a final plat. Should the county, town council approve the preliminary plat this evening, the applicant will still need to prepare and submit infrastructure improvement plans, which include streets, water service, wastewater service, landscape inventory and salvage, and as well as grading plans in conjunction with the final plat. Those plans should evidence compliance with the associated conditions of approval that staff and the planning commission are recommending that you approve this plat with. At such time that the infrastructure improvement plans and associated cost, engineers' cost estimates have been found to be acceptable, the applicant may then prepare the appropriate financial assurances to bring to council along with the final plat for approval. And one thing I will say about the conditions of approval, what those give staff, and I've, I've been a staff member for a good period of time. When someone comes in to develop a lot within a platted subdivision and we have conditions of approval, which we have quite a few subdivisions and quite a few conditions of approval that are unique to each subdivision. Staff is able to look at those and tell the, either whether it be the engineer, the homeowner, or any number of other professionals working on the development of a lot, that you shall meet these and these are not negotiable. So what I would offer to anyone that, that may disagree with that is staff takes the conditions of approval very seriously. As staff, this is the first time that, that I can recall all members of staff, all department heads actually sitting down and going through these and making sure that the town was in, was getting the best development for this land, given the underlying zoning, given the general plan land use entitlement, given their cap allocate, their, their certificate of assured water supply allocation. All of the above. So with that, I'd answer any questions that council may have. Thank you, Mayor.
Former Vice Mayor Silva.
Mr. Councilman, I realize that this is a preliminary plan and I understand the purpose of it. I understand a few questions coming up are more in line for a final plat. But I've seen what's happened in this town, case at point retaining walls. Obviously, there's going to, a lot of these lots because of the topography and the way it's not going to be mass graded, you're going to be grading each lot to have a buildable pad. I see the necessity. I see the necessity for retaining walls. On some or most of the lots. And I don't want to see something which I don't think would happen, but I don't want to see something that's a surprise. Like the what happened on Galloway Ridge where right north of our water plant, there's twenty two courses of eight inch block. Which looks like the Great Wall of China. We'll have another bite of this apple at the final class stage. I guess this would be directed to our town engineer. Would there be anything on there showing potential retaining walls that might be necessary? As one cuts into that slope area?
Mayor bunch, members of council, the any retaining walls would be a component or any retaining walls that would be a component of the infrastructure improvement plans. That would be coming back to council would be within the street sections. So if there needed to be minor cut and fill to allow for this street widths that they're proposing. Those would be the only retaining walls within a an overall concept plan. As for each loss development. Also referenced in the conditions of approval. A civil grading and drainage plan is required for each lot that's going to be developed, so they'll have to provide retention within the. Our requirements of the town engineer and also any retaining walls will be required to meet. The requirements of the technical design guidelines as well, so for every eight feet of exposed retaining wall. You're supposed to provide a four foot wide planter break and terrace walls up in that manner. So that would be that would be on a case by case lot by lot basis that we review those and we review those often on different on different site specific plans that comes.
So the answer is we would not get a second bite of the apple on that, that would be done by the staff at the final class stage.
But no, I had at the time of development of each individual lots, yes, right.
Another question is I am looking at the preliminary plot. I understand there's going to be a detention area required for each lot and it's identified. On the preliminary quiet, which is outside of the building envelope. I assume those may change in size, be it surface area or depth. Depending upon what's going to go being proposed within the development envelope for that lot, would that be correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Tom?
I have no comments. Thank you.
All right, doesn't look like there's anybody else up here want to ask a question, so we'll go to. Public hearing on this one, and I have three here, Sarah Foster. Like her comments right around read aloud, I agree with what Alyssa McMahon said in the commissioners meeting, I oppose the flag law. Okay, that was number twelve, also suspicious of private roads. This land will get developed, it's a shame the sleeper law wasn't purchased by the desert fields trust, I see no reason why we need to grant them all these exceptions. And this is kind of like I'm gender number twelve, which is where we are, but that's still a lot of homes, especially the prices they are going for now. Lisa Di Adamo oppose and James Hemis. Like comments read aloud oppose.
Anna Marcello.
My name is Steve Weber, new to Cave Creek, my wife and I came here just about nine months ago. Looking, we came here because of the mountains, because of the quietness. Because of what Cave Creek offers, that's different from else place, other places in in Phoenix. You know, I kind of look around here and I guess I'm going to have a slightly different look at this from everything else. You know, I looked at those trails, trails that run along streets are really not trails. You're taking away the pristine mountain, you're taking away what we have out there. And for what? You know, I I realize that I'm living someplace that. Someone had the foresight to build on. But we don't have to build everything, we have opportunities to look at it. You know, I was sitting back here between the meeting when you guys took a break. And there's a little saying here on the on the wall back here. And it says. Cave Creek Valley is an exceptional bit of unspoiled desert. Which through wise guidance and development should be saved and preserved by those large and small means who appreciate its unique natural value. You guys, you know, when I look around here, I don't come to a whole lot of these, but normally when I do, there's someone speaking. In favor and some speaking opposed. Outside of the developer here, I have yet to hear one person speak in favor. You need to think about what you're doing and who it's for. You represent the citizens of Cave Creek. Thanks.
David Phelps. Robert Peterson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, my name is Robert Peterson, I live at fifty seven fifty East Paseo Dulce, right down just across the wash. First, you know, I do appreciate the open land that the developer speaking of, but we all know that's going to be a tough build on that grade. And it isn't like it's just a gift, you know, they got to make it cost effective. I have a question that you addressed, Ms. Councilman Sol Silva about. Some of the drainage and retention areas that I haven't seen the details on, I'm wondering when we're going to be able to see details on that. And or and the sewer too, how's that going to be handled, you know, that? We've just had an episode with the Rancho Manana lift station that was a debacle and I'd hate to see anything like that happen again. That drainage, the main major wash that runs right behind the council building. Is going to carry much of the drainage of this site. And the engineer, town engineer is already aware and has had to make repairs to the crossing of Paseo Dulce. Because it is over top the road, you know, the five culverts to dump into the parking lot, flood the parking lot runs into the wash. Well, this is all going to drain into the same wash. And I foresee problems, you know, in my lifetime. Every development on a hill. Affects the people down below and usually in a bad way. And you just can't perceive all the stuff anyway, please take care on how you allow going forward with these items. Thank you.
I have no other cards.
Did you say no more?
No more.
Okay, we're back to council. Recuse so. How do you? Well, you've already recused yourself. Okay, well, this is a short one, so I'd like to do it. Yeah. Motion to approve preliminary plat P hyphen twenty one hyphen zero one, subject to the conditions of approval. Second.
Before a second comes up with it, and this is for Mr. Sims.
Actually, you know. Well, it was a tie between the two of us. Okay, yeah, go ahead, go ahead, former Vice Mayor.
After subject to the current thirty six conditions attached of approval. Just so we tie it to this one and not another one that may have come up with thirty or twenty four. Or is that being?
You okay with that? He's wanting to get real specific on this. He is getting specific on this, I, well. Subject to the conditions of approval, to me, that takes care of it. Now, I don't know if we need to enumerate.
Well, I'm. I would.
If you if you want to make the motion, you make it, I'm I'm.
No, no, no. I would ask you if.
I'm going to dig my heels in and say this is good enough for me. Tom, did you want to second this?
You get me between those two guys, I don't think.
Coward.
Yes.
Okay, it's seconded. Comments?
I have a question for Mr. Sims, would is that being too specific tying it into this? Because there there were different. Conditions of approval along the way that were less than this. And I would hate to see two, three, five, ten years from now, whenever somebody pulling out the wrong one, this ties it specifically. To this one being thirty six items.
Your file, your file will show those items, so I don't think you need to be more precise and then I'm going to turn to Luke. Have you ever between preliminary and final had to change the condition?
A a final plat may contain less conditions because some conditions are specific to a preliminary.
I truly think you should measure the conditions at the time of final plat is what I think you should do.
The the notice of decision rendered by council after this vote will read, subject to the conditions as contained in exhibit B. Which is the exhibit that was presented to council this evening, unless you wish to modify, amend, change any of the conditions contained within that exhibit.
That sounds good.
I accept that.
Okay, so comments? I I think that we've resolved to a substantial degree, every one of the outstanding issues. I think that, you know, honestly, I think that this will be a positive thing for the town. You know, people talk about, well, you've got to represent the people that voted you in, well, you know. Anna got one hundred and fifty five or one hundred and fifty seven people to sign a petition. I understand that's a group of citizens, there are a lot of other citizens out there who haven't said anything. So I'm representing. Those citizens and I decided they approved this. Councilman Silva, you had the second? Or did you? Tom, did you have a second, whoever had the second? Paul, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Councilman Diefenhofer.
There's been a lot of comments from the public here and then on on social media about how it's sad to see land developed and it is. If if I had my way and unlimited resources, I'd buy all the open land and Cave Creek wouldn't grow an inch, but I don't, nobody does. And so you look at how can, what's the best you can do, we are preserving twenty seven acres, I've hiked this site, seen where the roads are going to go. You're not going to see houses up on the top, up on the ridge. It'd be, and I know without having specific house designs, but I'm sure someone could come up with an artist rendering of what it would look like from Cave Creek with just some. But you know, blocks representing houses, and I think you'd be pleasantly surprised on how much of the viewscape is going to be preserved with this. But to think that anyone on this council can just say, oh, no, we're going to stop all development is unreasonable. And as I mentioned earlier, we all live in houses that were once on pristine version desert land. And unfortunately, that's just the way it is, we have was private property. And we have to look at the best ways to 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 achieve, and I think we've done that. By a lot well, getting twenty seven acres of the top and all that preserve. And I think once this is done, you'll be presently surprised.
Comment? Please.
I think I'm correct if I state this, that the zoning is in place. And that the applicant is complying with that zoning. And that they're complying with the general plan, as I've heard tonight. And the applicants complying with the town's hillside regulations and with the town town's disturbance. Regulation and more importantly. They're complying with the town's fire code, the IFC and our local ones. And Mr. Diefendorf's comments are well put. Twenty seven acres of open space, thirty five percent of the plan. And I'm I'm in favor of it and I will support it.
Councilman Mwar.
I thought councilperson Diefendorf's comments were were very well taken. I also want to say that there are people who are concerned that we are not representing the Cave Creek, that we are maybe wanting to have development all over the place. No, I I agree with councilperson Diefendorf, I'd rather see less development. This property is going to be developed and as far as I can see, this is better than we would have expected. I think if it's going to get developed, which I think is, we have no choice there. Then let's go for the best development we can, and I think this probably is about the best we're going to get, so if we're going to do it, let's do it right.
My house was built in nineteen seventy seven, if we took away all the houses in Cave Creek that were built after nineteen seventy seven, it would be much more pristine and much prettier. Than it is today. If we never built another house in the town of Cave Creek, it would thrill me, but that's unrealistic. Someone earlier mentioned being in San Francisco and and it brought me back to a song that a songwriter, folk singer songwriter named Malvina Reynolds wrote in nineteen sixty two. And she was driving past Berkeley and the song is little boxes, little boxes, little boxes on a hillside. Little boxes made of ticky tacky little boxes, all the same, there's a green one and a pink one, I think you get the gist. It's fun little ditty, if you're going to listen to it, it's probably online somewhere. But the bottom line here is we're saving, they're saving the twenty seven acres that are most visible to us, which is something that we want to do in the town of Cave Creek. The property rights are existing there, the the zoning was was in place before we became a town. A previous plan that had, I think, I think Luke said sixty three homes on it. You take a standard square grid pattern like a normal subdivision, you're ending up with with big cliffs and stuff goofy stuff up there and roads that you'd see from anytime you made the corner down there. I think this is the best that we could get. Although I'd prefer nothing, but it is what it is, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes five zero. Let's go back to number one. I think maybe we'll finally get somebody who's sitting in the back row there most of the evening wants to wants to be able to to get out here and go home. Didn't I remember one council discussion approval of the town sponsorship of a stargazing event to be held on town owned Phoenix mine site property on Saturday, November seventh. Twenty twenty one from five thirty PM to ten PM placed on the agenda by the town manager.
Mayor, members of council, we have an application for a special event by Bruce Arland to do a star gazing event out at the parking lot at Spurcross. Which is property owned by the town of Cave Creek. And the when there's a special event. The liability insurance by the person applying for the special event, they have to supply a certificate of insurance to the town for the liability of the event. And Mr. Arlen asked that the town sponsor the event so that the town's liability would cover that. Now, there are a few other things that come along with sponsoring that the event besides the liability or special event. Permitting process requires. Restrooms, the Spurcross Ranch Conservation Area officially closes at eight o'clock at night, so those restaurants, restrooms are not available. There are county regulations that say any event with persons. Doesn't matter how many, but up to one hundred, so it could be five or ten, up to one hundred are required to have one portage on. Renting a portage on costs a little under five hundred dollars or so. Sometimes you can get a little cheaper. That burden would also be on the town for that event and then I and I think the last issue and and Mr. Arling will be able to speak and correct me if I'm wrong. But I learned last week that they would like to borrow our television and the cart that we use, sits outside for our council meetings for the Zoom session. And when the town has an event. The equipment belongs to the town and we don't just loan it out, so we are responsible for it. A staff member will take that out to the site, help set that up. uh, help set that up, remain at the site during the event and breaks that, any whatever equipment we have, break it down and brings it back to town hall. So that is also a requirement, um, that goes along with any approval of this being a special event that the town sponsors.
Would that be our AV dude sitting in the corner back there?
I don't know. I'm just saying there needs to be a staff person that will take that.
Laughing.
It is on a Sunday night.
Yeah.
And that's all I have.
Would it be on a volunteer basis for the staff person or?
It depends if they are hourly employee. There's regulation by the federal government about hourly versus.
Salary.
Salary employees.
Question from council.
I do have a question.
Oh, but but current vice mayor.
The, yeah. Actually, this seems like a pretty good idea to me, but but there are certain requirements, and you mentioned, uh, most of them. Uh, are the restroom facilities, the, uh, little, uh, chambers of horror? Are they, have they been, uh, purchased or rented?
Mayor, council members, no, no, we have not done anything.
Uh, is there the liability insurance, which I think is, you know, critical anytime we have these?
The the purpose of requesting the council, um, to approve this as a town-sponsored event is so that the town's liability insurance that we have for our property that would cover the event because it would be a town-sponsored event.
Oh, I didn't see that. I thought it was as a special event.
So the town would cover the liability insurance for the, and then the, um, restroom and the staff person and to take care of the equipment to set it up.
So this will cost the town a few dollars?
A few.
And overtime for some employee. Okay. That's the answer to my question. Thank you.
Yes.
Former vice mayor Silver.
My question, Madam Manager, uh, if this were, if this is being considered as a town-sponsored event, I assume everybody in the town would have to be notified of the event. So uh, they would make a determination if they wanted to attend or not. And as such, this would be, I'm assuming, posted uh, on the town website or newsletter or something to that effect. My question is, has that been done? And if it hasn't, can it be a a town-sponsored event? If it's, if it's a small, uh, localized, non-published event?
Uh, Mayor Councilman, any event of any size can be a town-sponsored event if the council budgets for it or votes for whatever, that we have some that are included in the budget and and we do year after year. And then we have occasionally, um, uh, organizations that come and request that the town sponsor or partially sponsor an event. In this case, I believe that Mr. Arland has already begun his advertising. He requested that the town, um, put this on our website and also advertise it. And I indicated that until the council approved this as a town-sponsored event, we wouldn't do that. But should you approve it, we will put it on our town website and and, uh, notify the public that this is a town-sponsored event.
Th- this is the plan for, I think, this this Sunday?
This coming Sunday, the seventh, I believe.
If one were to put pen to paper, what would be the approximate cost to the town? Assuming that the there's a hourly town employee that would uh, bring the TV and stand out there, stay with it and then transport it. What would be a, like a not a maximum amount, an estimate of that?
Uh, Mayor Councilmember, I would say maybe seven, eight hundred dollars at the most.
Oh, well, then that would be for adding the, uh, event to our liability policy and and the porta potties and everything.
Uh, Mayor, in our, in our case, the for parking for the normal use of that property, our liability insurance already is covering the event. There's no additional cost to the town. But there would be, um, there could be a substantial cost to a private organization that wants this, but they'd have to get a a special insurance rider and pay and give that to the town.
Do we have any ideas to the approximate number of the people that may be attending this?
I believe Mr. Arland is here. He could answer any questions of about the specifics of the event.
Okay. Well, if I may, Mr. Mayor, address that question, Mr. Ireland.
I think that would be appropriate.
Well, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Um, I have some answers actually. Uh, thank you, Town Manager Direct for putting this on the agenda tonight. Really appreciate it. Let's see, I'm trying to remember some some of your questions. A couple of things regarding the TV on the stand. Kelly Francis, who is, uh, an enthusiast of dark sky viewing, told me that she was coming to the event anyway and that she she could be the overseer of the one monitor. We're actually going to be having four monitors, including that, uh, that's out there. That's why I'm pointing there. Three other monitors so that everybody can, they can bring their chairs, they can you know, gather around and every, all of the telescope images are going to be in real time on these large monitors. So nobody has to wait in line to look into it, you know, a single telescope. The liability insurance, thankfully, I think would cost the town zero to add this. I I, is that true? I think you said that. Yes. So that's zero. The porta potty is required for a hundred or less people, which there will be a hundred or less people. You could probably rent one of those for about three hundred dollars. I have technicians that will be there who are expert event people for big concerts who will be run, including the astronomer, who will be running all of the equipment from the telescope into into the monitors. I mean, real experts, you know, we're actually testing everything. We've already gone through one run-through. We're going to go through another run, run-through. I believe on Wednesday, uh, if all goes well tonight, uh, right here, we've reserved the room for a few hours. There will be no technical issues at all. I have red ones for parking. Everybody will be shuttled into a, into the first entry into the parking lot and while everybody will park there. The telescope will be at at the end of the new parking lot area, the darkest area where although everybody's would come at least a half hour before the show begins so that no headlights will infect, you know, night vision or the show. So I have three people who will direct traffic perfectly. We, we know exactly how many people will be coming, how many cars there will be. It's a flawless show, frankly, you know? It will be a clear night. And, um, in terms of the expense of, well, let me see, a town employee, let me get back to that. That's true. You did mention that to me recently. We don't need a technical person. We we have that, the technical people to literally just plug one thing into the television. Uh, I would take personal responsibility for that monitor and the stand. It's a beautiful stand. It's one of the reasons we wanted to use it. I would sign my uh, responsibility away to buy a new stand, buy a new TV if anything happened to it. How much would it cost Kelly Francis to be there for a two-hour show? I don't know. She's coming anyway. Just so I would hope you would, yes, especially on a no-cost liability insurance, which is was the whole point of this to begin with. Any questions?
Council? Councilman Maguire.
Yeah, um, Town Manager, have you, uh, considered the idea of working with the county to make their, uh, porta jones available on for a special purpose after normal hours?
A mayor council member, um, that would be up to the event organizer to have an agreement with the county with that. And I could start working with them after it's a town-sponsored event.
Excellent.
It's a good idea.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Marie.
My only comment is, you know, we didn't have Taste of Cave Creek this year. We didn't have the Beer Fest this year. So we really haven't really expended any funds on special events to speak of. So I'm in favor of helping us sponsor this event.
Yeah, I remember a couple of years ago, we paid over a couple of thousand dollars for a pile of snow. And and in context, that disappeared very quickly and and I didn't get to enjoy it at all because it was for little kids. I only wanted to bring that up because, you know, we're talking about something that probably quite a few people in the in the the town would enjoy is probably something that is consistent with the mentality of a lot of people in town. I I I probably could, uh, vote in favor of this. I am unhappy a little bit that this is at the very end of the process. So now if everything could be put together, I'd say, fine. Now, it it's really up to whether your staff can can handle it and all of the, everything will, uh, work out.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, uh, we agree. We think it's a great event. It's simply a procedure that needs to happen. And as soon as Mr. Arland came and said he was using the property, we suggested he fill out a special event application and we would go through the process. And so we got on the next available agenda.
And you and you came to us because we're all good people.
It's a good event for them.
Yeah.
Could I ask one question? Where, where was the snow? I never saw that.
You weren't invited. If 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 you were crumbling cookies in the backseat, you were not invited.
It was.
I was going to say, we are a dark sky community without being part of the international dark sky organization.
We're making our way.
But we are a dark sky community. And I think this is a benefit of being uh, per our ordinance, a dark sky community. And I think it's a good idea and I I I I would support it.
Thank you.
What day is it really?
Yeah, what day is it? Because this is Saturday, December.
It's this, in fact, I sent everybody, oh, one other thing, it's the Sunday, but uh, there has to be.
Sunday the seventh.
Right, there has to be a notice for council people, the quorum, what is that?
We take care of that.
Yeah. That's governed, right, because I know some of you are coming, so.
Any other questions?
It's Sunday at six, six o'clock. Arrive at six or a little before. Show starts right at six thirty when it becomes totally dark for two hours. It's going to be a really great show.
Councilman Maguire.
I've, no, I think we've gotten off of procedure here. We're supposed to be asking questions, but may I conform to what's happened and just make a statement?
Well, let's 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 go to public comment. Let's get a motion. Let's get, let's get out of here tonight.
Thank you.
Public comment. Seeing and hearing none, we just heard the only public comment from the promoter. We're back to council for a motion, please.
I. Motion to approve town sponsorship for the November seventh, twenty twenty-one stargazing event at the town-owned Phoenix mine site property, which our authorizes the town provide liability insurance coverage for the event.
Second.
Right. Now, comments? Tom, you had a comment?
Yeah, we, uh, thanks to Mr. Arland and, uh, Mr. Hughes, uh, we have in, uh, in started on a process of trying to preserve the dark skies that we have in Cave Creek. Uh, I think this is in line with what the council has determined, what we have done through our ordinances. And I think it's, it's going to be wonderful to have this event. I'm looking forward to it. And I think it certainly is very much in line with, uh, the future that we see for Cave Creek and for the values of this community. Thank you.
Marie, this could conceivably be financial, so let's go ahead and do it.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bob.
Conceivably be financial, so a roll call vote is in order, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Diefenhorfer.
Yes.
Councilmember Silver.
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, yes, motion carries seven zero. All right. Agenda item number two, council discussion authorization of the scope of services for Rounds Consulting Group Phase Two for an amount not to exceed thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Mayor, members of council, the, um, is a follow-up to the last regular council meeting where, um, we took public, uh, input on the, um, process for funding of fire service. This is the follow-up for approval of the scope of services for Rounds, um, consulting group and, um, I haven't received any, well, received a couple of comments about the, uh, scope of services. And if you are comfortable with that, we'll move forward. I know that, um, the Rounds Consulting Group has actually moved forward on a good faith, uh, starting this. So we hope to have results in a couple of weeks so we can bring this back to council for discussion, uh, towards the end of November.
Question, council?
I have one.
Vice Mayor.
This says that, uh, his, uh, project would include, uh, looking at utility fees and capital expenditures. Uh, don't we already have somebody looking at utility fees? Or is this not a comprehensive review of utility fees or just how much money will be be expected to be coming in from the fees?
Uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, in a conversation with him, it really is more for him to understand the financing or, um, loans or whatever we have to do with our capital projects pertaining to the utility enterprise and how that affects the options for funding the fire.
Okay, so, and then and looking at the, uh, what he talks about is a comprehensive review. It it appears that, uh, this is, uh, really looking, uh, in a comprehensive way to the future. What what are the effects of what we decision we've made in the past, decisions we're making now? And what may be facing us in the future? This is, and and I have to say, I was not happy with the way that the structure, uh, was done by him, uh, last time around because it started at essentially the bottom line and then said, what goes below that? I want to, I want to know that he understands what is above the bottom line.
Uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, that's correct. He he will take our our budget as is, our foundation, and then we'll look at adding the expense and adding the revenues and and what different revenue sources we have and, uh, look at the margin and and give you options to make a decision.
That's good. Thank you.
Mills? All right, there is public comment on this one?
Who?
David Phelps.
Guess who?
Uh, David Phelps.
Wait, David, I haven't started. Okay, go.
Did we miss David on the last item?
Uh, let's see what agenda I don't know. So a comprehensive review and looking at this holistically is really the only way to consider our financing options. I'm in support. I would hope that this doesn't just begin a, um, exercise in suggesting that we're going to have a straight property tax versus bonds versus something else, but really, the only way we can look at financing the the fire department is to consider our utility debts and our and our capital improvement plan. So I'm glad you guys are doing this. I think it's money well spent. Appears to me the guy works for cheap, which is always nice. And, uh, hopefully he does a great job. cheap, which is always nice. And hopefully does a great job for us like he's done for other municipalities around the state, kind of studying the same thing. So good going. Thank you.
One minute, point zero nine seconds. We have any more?
No other comments.
Hardly anybody left.
I'll make the motion.
Oh, please.
Motion to authorize a scope of services for Round Consulting Group for Phase Two of an amount not to exceed $39,985.
Second. Okay, and can I comment?
Yep.
And I'd just like to add that he hasn't just worked for other municipalities.
Yeah.
He has worked for other for profit organizations, and which is what I think is very important to to mention, because it's not just for governmental organizations. And so I think he was a very good choice, and I'm very proud that we have brought him in. And it's a direct result of listening to our constituents, because we have spent this money, and it's a lot of money. And it's directly because our constituents have asked for this kind of expertise. So we listened and we did our job. So you're welcome.
Hear the comments?
No.
This this one's definitely a financial role, please.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Devenfer.
Yes.
Councilmember Sova.
Yes.
Councilmember Royer. Yes. Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Mayor Bunch.
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Agenda item number three, which is council discussion approval of a cooperative purchase agreement contract with Weber Water Resources to complete repairs to the Galvin well in Desert Hills. I'm wondering why you're sitting there.
Item four is for the planning.
Oh, got it.
Keep the seat warm.
Evening, Mayor and Council. As indicated, this is a cooperative purchase contract. We're trying to do the Galvin well is one of the three wells that we have in Desert Hills. Just under two years ago, we had an issue with that well. We actually had to do a repair of a new pump motor into it. Sadly, just over a month ago, staff all doing their weekly inspections found that the motor had actually shorted out. When they they did some investigation, they thought that something had happened to the cable when we pulled it up. We actually had Weber come in and we used the town manager's procurement authority to bring them in initially. They pulled the well and they found some breaks in the conductor, the power cable, which ended up shorting out the motor. So we're in a situation right now that again, the second largest well we have in Desert Hills is out of service, but a service but a lot. Weber with this authorization, we can get rubber working this week to actually go in and do some rehabilitation of the well while it's out and makes sense to go in. There's an obstruction, we believe, at the bottom of the well casing. We know it's at the bottom of the well casing. We spent a little bit of time trying to get that out. That benefit to that is if we pull it out, we can actually lower the well pump lower as the water cable goes down. That comprises more time with that that well and also do some repairs to the well casing. We did do a video when we pulled out the well and it looks like there's some instructions of some of the perforations of the well. So we're asking for your authority to use utilizing existing contract that Weber Weber Water Resources has with the city of Scottsdale to do the same similar type of work. So any I can answer any questions council may have.
What what caused the break? What why? This that's not a typical, especially two years, and we lose a piece of equipment and we have to replace the whole thing. It it's very difficult to rationalize. So on a component basis, rather than it busted, why why did break?
Mayor Councilmember, what they observed when they they pulled up the casing, they think actually the power cable is rubbing against the well housing.
And we had a fix for that. So we don't.
Yeah.
Two years down the road and have another one of these?
Yeah, Weber is actually recommending that they do a PC sleeve to protect that so that the 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 power cable for the well is protected.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Where it's on the actual pipe coming from the pump instead of rubbing against the casing.
Yeah, usually you you support every so many feet.
Yeah.
So it doesn't rub. In this case, there was a section where it's a fairly long length. Again, there our pump is set down at 650 feet. So it's a long length.
Mine's 440. We still taped it.
Yeah, there is was taped. It's just there was one section was too long and wore it.
Anything else from council? There is a public comment on this one.
Only one public left.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I don't think this is happening. We're back to council for motion, please.
I do the motion.
You may.
Motion to approve a cooperative purchasing purchasing agreement contract with Weber Water Resources to complete repairs to the Galvin well in Desert Hills.
Second.
Comment.
This is something that's important because every drop of water that doesn't come out of the well comes out of the cap canal and costs us money.
Yeah, and we can't and we can't bank it.
That's right.
All right, this one's definitely a financial as well.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Devenfer.
Yes.
Councilmember Sova.
Yes.
Councilmember Royer. Yes. Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Mayor Bunch.
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Agenda item number four, council discussion award of contract to Okanagan Trail Construction, Prince OTC Company for an amount not to exceed $37,460 for construction of a non-motorized trail easement within the town right of way along Spurcross Road from Cave Creek Road, traveling north and connecting to the Grapevine Road and Spurcross Road Trails.
Thank you, Mayor Members of Council. This project was approved in this fiscal year budget. As part of the trails budget. So what the and I pulled it up here, the the general location, you'll see Cave Creek Road in an orientation north to south, Spurcross, well, in this straight up and down and Spurcross right to left. What this trail will do is provide a stamped asphalt similar to other areas where we've had to account for either drainage issues or concerns within the shoulder of the right of way. So it's essentially a 1,000 foot pathway that will connect from Cave Creek Road all the way to where the Spurcross Trail begins at Grapevine and Spurcross, which is that that S curve there at the bottom right of the screen. And also, we have plans concurrently, but they're well below the the threshold for council consideration. And they were also included in the in the budget to extend a pathway along Grapevine Road to Basin Road, as well as through the the just installed Galloway Ridge Trail that runs there. So there will be a this will be a huge connection to our overall trail system and really complete Spurcross Road, which is to kind of speak for Bambi, a really exciting culmination of effort. Been years in the making. So without I'll answer any questions.
I tend to procrastinate, don't really like finishing things. So I don't know. Okay.
Yeah.
Count one question.
Vice Mayor.
Is is there a projected trail to go from out front here to Surrey Road so that that'll connect the entire system with a big loop?
Mayor Members of Council, Vice current Vice Mayor Smith, absolutely. That is the that is the goal. And and that section will likely be in the next fiscal year's budget presentation when we get to that point.
Okay, good. Anything else from council? Former Vice Mayor Sova.
We only received the one bid on this, correct?
That is correct.
And I recollect this company has done a lot of work in recent years. This price is commensurate with their prior pricing, whatever square foot basis or.
Yes, this is a little bit more unique trail than they typically do for the town. But it is commensurate with what they've bid in the past and also in conversations with other contractors that do this type of work. The they're all pretty much in line. We just haven't had anyone interested in bidding it because of the size of the job. It's these aren't really huge jobs that we're doing. So it's an economies of scale issue where we've got a trail contractor that really loves the community, I think, is probably the biggest reason that he keeps bidding these for us. So that's that's kind of where we're getting just these one one off bids on this. Okay, thank you.
Public comment. Seeing, hearing none, we're back to council for motion, please.
Can I do this motion, too?
You certainly may, Vice Mayor.
Motion to award a contract to, okay, again, Brandon, Trail Construction Company for an amount not to exceed $37,460 for construction of a non-motorized trail easement with the towns right of way along Spurcross Road.
Second.
Now, is that construction or constriction? Because I see both of them in here.
Well, I think that this actually shows the prescience that Councilman McGuire showed a few years ago when he requested that there be $100,000 set aside each year for trail work. This is, I think, a really good use of that money.
More trails.
No, this one's financial as well.
Councilmember Devenfer.
Yes.
Councilmember Sova.
Yes.
Councilmember Royer. Yes. Councilmember Morris.
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Bunch.
Yes, motion carries seven zero.
Thank you.
Item number five. Well, thank you. Council discussion approval of rental and virgin pumps and storage tanks at the Rancho Mignano lift station. Here we go again.
Whoever put this together on work.
I move stuff around, you know.
Keeping it nice. They're keeping it moving.
We'll make that a part of the annual evaluation.
Mayor and council members, 2147. Asking for a motion to allow us to authorize payments that have occurred with a BNF contracting. BNF contracting has existing contracts. The town actually has a contract with them through a job or contracting to do some sewer line repairs. In this case, we had utilized an existing contract that they have to provide emergency pumping services. So as I talked about earlier, it's been brought up a couple of times, the Rancho Mignano Lift Station experienced some overflow issues this past summer during the monsoon storm events. We had she had two of the storms cause stormwater influence to the flexion system that overflowed the situation. In both cases, we we asked BNF to come in on emergencies to help us out. The first event, pumps weren't keeping up. They brought out a single bypass pump to help boost the station. They brought it out just as sort of flows were subsiding, but staff was very nervous about it. So during the second event, we actually had their emergency bypass pump working as well as the lift station. Lift station ever stopped working during the the two storm events. But again, we still could not or we could not keep up with the stormwater flow. So we worked with them again to bring a second pump out and some holding tanks. The thought being that the holding tanks would allow us to divert the incoming flow to the tanks instead of allowing it to leave the site, go to the wash, then we can then handle it after the fact. We've kept those tanks and those pumps on site until we were able to do the complete repairs, which involves buying new pumps, as I indicated in your quarterly report, which we've now installed and we've actually done almost doubled the capacity of the pumps at the sites. We feel very comfortable that we can remove this equipment. We've already started to remove some of the equipment, the tanks, large holding tanks have actually been removed. We have one other project we're going to do tomorrow at the site where we're going to do an entry into the wet well. So we're keeping the bypass pumps through tomorrow and then we'll actually have BNF remove them. So in total, this is going to be a $50,000 expenditure for paying for the the tankage and then the pumps that we had at the site. We were very nervous and they did help during the events. They just weren't enough. So we believe we have put some solutions in place. And with the work that we're going to do on the collection system, that'll be the permanent solution. So we just need council's authorization to make these payments without answering questions.
Mayor question.
Yes, yes.
Proposal is for time gone by. The three is pages 124, 5, and 6.
May 2022.
Well, mine mine says that they're all 2021. First, the first proposal.
Yeah, it's actually for work that you're correct.
This is for approval of payment of work that was done.
Yeah, when we first started, you know, when we first started the work, we were doing it under the the manager's authority, procurement authority. But as the the time went on, we should have come to council last month and asked when we were exceeding the $25,000.
So this work has all been done?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I read the peoria contract.
I accept your apology.
New career in store here. You're moving up to a larger.
Shall I read the motion?
It's public comment. Anybody got a comment? Okay, we're back to council for motion. Please, council.
Motion to approve the rental of emergency pumps and storage tanks at the Rancho Mignano Lift Station.
Second.
This one's definitely financial. Comments, anyone? We've got to pay our bills.
We got to move that, whatever.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes, motion carries seven zero. Number agenda item number six, council discussion approval of resolution R 2021-19, authorizing the mayor to execute on behalf of the town, the One Arizona Distribution of Opioid Settlement Funds Agreement, an agreement among the state of Arizona and local governments, which means we're going to have enough money to buy maybe a pot of coffee.
A little more, Mayor Council, on page, it's late. It's on page 127. There's a three page memo that you can read that you can describe where we are. This is the second step of a three step process. You approved the non-binding MOU a year ago to set the stage for this document, which is a binding agreement where you and other governments in the state of Arizona are agreeing to an allocation. So allocation is skewed frankly in favor of the state. But this is far better than the last time the state got involved. The tobacco settlement, for example, I represented this, the state's largest public hospital. There the government states for almost all the funds. Here the state is taking 44% of the funds. There is what I call a carrot and a stick approach. The defendants, three distributors and one manufacturer are willing to offer $16 million to settle, but they want to make sure all potential plaintiffs settle. For example, you're not suing anybody. And so they've added an additional $10 billion to the 26th if the if all governments will sign. It has a dramatic impact on what you'll receive here here in Maricopa County. If all the governments sign, you'll get $91,000. But it could go as low as $51,000 if not everyone signs. So the league and the state and the AG are all trying to get governments to sign. This would authorize the mayor, it has to be done before November 10, to sign this binding agreement that sets up this process of allocating funds to try to get all of your fellow colleagues in the state in this county and across the states. Because if you don't all sign up, the defendants won't pony up for the 10 million. My recommendation is to approve. I do recommend reading on page 127. We really pushed hard trying to make it better for cities and towns. We were partially successful.
Councilmember.
I'll read it. The motion. Do we have public comment?
No.
No public. Motion to approve Resolution R 2021-19, Resolution of the Mayor and Council of the Town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the mayor to execute on behalf of the town, the One Arizona Distribution of Opioid Settlement Funds Agreement, an agreement among the state of Arizona and local governments.
Comment, comments. This hey, this this one's finance. This is we're getting money. We have to do a roll call on this one.
You're well. You're releasing tens of thousands of dollars of claims against.
We probably ought to do. Let's do a roll call.
Do it twice.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes, I already just signed it. So we will move on to agenda item number last, I think.
13.
13. All right, 13. 13 says, can council consideration approval of budget appropriation transfer the amount of $40,378 from general fund contingency reserve account to the general fund attorney department professional services line item.
Mayor Members of Council, this is for fiscal year ending June 30, 2021. We're requesting the budget transfer as the town engages services of an attorney or a law firm that helped with the carefree lawsuit or.
Arbitration. You can call it that.
Yes, arbitration. So with that, the overall account for legal fees went over by $40,378. And so we're recommending that you authorize the transfer from the reserve account 01013102949 to the general fund department 003102049.
Questions? Somebody got a motion?
Motion to.
Public comment. Seeing and hearing none, we're back to council.
Motion to approve a budget transfer of forty thousand three hundred and seventy eight dollars from the general fund contingency reserve account paren zero one dash zero one three one zero zero dash two nine four nine to the general fund attorney department professional services line item paren zero one dash zero zero three one zero zero dash two zero four nine, close paren period.
Second.
Let's do a roll call on this one too.
Before that, I want to congratulate Catherine on how well she read that. I was reading along with you and I was saying.
No mistakes. Shall I just say that's because I didn't get to talk enough tonight? How much I miss talking tonight?
But you were so accurate as well.
You know, I'm impressed. I have to say it pained me not to participate tonight. Generally, it really did.
Okay.
Yes. 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 Yes.
Yes.
Uh, yes. Motion carries seven zero. Do we have motion to adjourn? All in favor? I.